Was that not loud enough? Is that not?
That's good.
Is that better? All right. I know. This board meeting of the Board of Education for May 24, 2022 is called to order. Hi, everybody. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tab. The meeting is being streamed live on PPTV Services website and on Channel 28 and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. Good evening. It's nice to see everyone tonight. Tonight, I am Andrew Scott. I'm the vice chair of the Board. Saying they can't hear? All right. I'm Andrew Scott. I'm the vice chair of the Board, and I'm filling in for Chair to Pass who is not able to be here tonight. Thank you, everyone, who provided public comment earlier this evening on the plan for Southeast Enrollment Balancing, which we are voting on tonight. Also this evening, we're going to be voting to approve the 2022-23 budget and the imposition of property taxes, as well as an approval agreement with our ATU partners. Given that we have two very major and complex items on tonight's agenda, we've pared down tonight's meeting to just those topics, as well as the consent agenda. Before we get started, I just want to share a couple of reminders. We ask that all members of the public attending this meeting tonight treat each other, staff, and the Board with respect, and do not interfere with the ability of the Board to conduct its business. Those wishing to display placards, signs, or banners should please remain in the auditorium foyer behind the seating area, and please don't block any attendees' views of the proceedings. Also, please keep walkways clear and aisles clear. And in general, we would just appreciate it if you can be mindful of others in the room, the words you use, and be aware of who's watching, including our community's children. And we, as a Board, will do the same thing. I also want to note, because I think it's weighing on me tonight, and I'm guessing it's weighing on many people in our community, that yet another senseless tragedy has taken place today. And I'll be honest, I saw these headlines, and I haven't really been able to bring myself to read the stories because of, it feels like it happens all the time, and we know what happened, and yet we still have to, I think we have to acknowledge. I mean, a gunman walked into an elementary school in Uvalde, Texas, and killed 14 children and a teacher. I'm sorry. Yeah. It's rising. And the enormity of these murders is really unbearable to think about. And I think no one, especially children, should ever have to fear for their lives when they're in our schools. So our thoughts are with the victim's family and the entire Uvalde community. And Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Scott. Just to add my, a remark here as well, and it seems almost insufficient, but our hearts and thoughts do go out to the families and victims of those impacted by today's senseless tragedy at Robb Elementary in Uvalde, Texas. It's just another disturbing tragedy, an unfortunate reminder of the gun violence that grips our country and our communities. We'll keep these families, our colleagues, and the Uvalde Consolidated Independent School District in our hearts, and we'll continue to denounce gun violence in those strongest terms, so unfortunately.
Thanks. I'm actually going to ask for just a quick moment of silence. Thank you. I don't think there's any way to effectively do this transition, so I'm just going to do it. We now need to vote on our consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items you would like to pull for discussion, we can set those aside for discussion and vote at the end of the meeting. Is there anything anyone would like to pull?
Want a motion?
For the consent agenda? Yes, please.
So moved?
Fugue.
Great. Director Brim Edwards moves, and Director Holland seconds the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there any board discussion on the consent agenda? Student Representative Weinberg, did you have any thoughts on the consent agenda? Just want to make sure we have space, if you had any.
I think just uplifting the ELA, the K-5 ELA curriculum adoption. We've spent the greater part of this year working on it with teachers and piloting it in our schools. We agreed to put on the consent agenda. I just wanted to uplift that we are voting on that this evening.
Thank you. And Ms. Bradshaw, I believe there's some public comment on the consent agenda?
The person who signed up for public comment actually canceled.
Okay. So any additional public comment on the consent agenda?
Not on the consent agenda.
Great. The Board will now vote on Resolutions 6504 through 6510?
Director Scott?
Yes.
There was a change to the consent agenda. The 6504 was withdrawn. It's the index to the, if we will, the index of the minutes.
Great, thank you. So now we are voting on Resolutions 6505 through 6510?
Yep.
Correct? Excellent. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Great. The consent agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero, with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Great. We now turn to student and public comment. Before we begin, just a quick review of our guidelines for public comment. The Board thanks everyone for taking time to attend this meeting, providing your comments. The public input that we get informs and improves our work, and we really look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a Board is to actively listen. Our Board Office may follow up on Board-related issues that are raised during public testimony, and we also request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the Superintendent's Office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you would like to provide to the Board or Superintendent, we ask that you email them to publiccomment@ppss.net. Again, that's publiccomment@ppss.net. Please make sure when you begin your comment, you clearly state your name and spell your last name. You will have three minutes to speak, and you will hear a sound after three minutes, which means it's time to conclude your thoughts. And with that, Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment? I know we do. So let's go ahead and type in the student, student comment, please.
We have Claire Schnabel.
Welcome. Either microphone is fine, and state your name, and when you start talking, your time will begin.
All right, thank you. Hello, my name is Claire Schnabel, S-C-H-N-A-B-E-L. My pronouns are they/them. I am a junior at Franklin High School, and I would like to request to start the process for a name change at Franklin High School. As a community, we would like our namesake to be a better representative of what values we want to instill in our students. After looking deeper into the actions and beliefs of Benjamin Franklin, we full-heartedly believe that he does not represent the supportive and respectful environment we hope to achieve at our school. His ideals and beliefs surrounding race and gender are a direct contradiction to our, towards our continuing attempts to create an equitable learning environment that supports the education of the members in it. Like many figures in United States history, problematic parts of their lives have been concealed for the preservation of their legacy. In Benjamin Franklin's case, he is well-known as a founding father of the United States. However, he used his power to suppress the voices of minorities and actively advocated against the immigration of non-WASP peoples. His white agenda contributed negatively to the racial demographics we can see in our community today. Let us not forget these aspects of his legacy. As we are advancing in society, beliefs and ideas are growing and changing at a rapid pace. Humanity is gaining the knowledge of how to create inclusive spaces, including spaces that have traditionally been exclusive towards minorities and many groups of people. We aim to create a community for people of all identities, regardless of gender, race, ethnicity, socioeconomic standpoint, religion, sexual orientation, and more. To aid in this creation, we must be represented by someone who models belief in these values, who models inclusivity to all members of our community, and whose legacy should be honored as helping us achieve this. We move to change our namesake to a person who has benefited our community, rather than one who has negatively impacted it by means of racist exclusion. We ask you, the Board, to approve this request to form a committee to formally start the name change process and support us through this process, as you have already done for other PPS high schools, such as Ida B. Wells Barnett High School and Leonis McDaniel High School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ramona Freeman and Leila Whitehead. Abel Bachman.
Hi, my name is Abel Bachman, A-B-E-L, and I don't want, and I don't want Lent to be fully DLI because of safety issues. Kids would, um, kids would have to cross busy roads and pass by houseless people that are unsafe. My sister goes to Kellogg Middle School, and buses get canceled often. This would force some kids to have to walk home unsafely. At Lent, I have friends that are in DLI and chess club and Lent Leopard Leaders. I would miss them if I was at a different school. It is important for kids to have friends from all cultures, and that would not happen if we have to change schools. Teacher Ron has taught us about climate and what affects it. Having extra buses on the road would affect the climate negatively. Lent has always been a local school that anyone could go to regardless of what culture or language they speak, and I don't want that to change. Thank you for listening.
Dani Cage.
Good evening. I'm Dani Cage. I am Grant High School's district student council representative, and tonight I'll be giving testimony for PPS attendance coach and Democratic Nottingham Manee for Oregon State House District 48, Hua Nguyen. Ms. Nguyen couldn't attend, as she is a school board member for David Douglas, but she is here in solidarity and in spirit with us. This is her testimony. My name is Hua Nguyen. I'm a school attendance coach and multi-tiered, for the multi-tiered systems and support department. I have worked in this role for eight years, supporting school communities addressing chronic absenteeism. I have supported Lent School when it was a K-8 for several years, and I want to share my solidarity and support for the students, parents, and teachers who are advocating to keep their neighborhood at Lent School. During my time at Lent School, I have worked with Lent's supports team to address chronic absenteeism, and has been one of the biggest challenges to attendance is access to transportation. Currently, I support all schools in PPS, and I have seen the impact of transportation for Lent's middle school students transitioning to Kellogg and other feeder schools like Marysville. Parents are struggling to get their kids to school on time, or even at all. We currently do not have enough school bus routes, hot passes, and for our schools in Southeast Portland, we do not have the safest routes, with one of the highest crash fatality rates. Sometimes, we make these big decisions as a district and have huge impacts on our students, parents, and staff. We do not address the basic needs that our families are looking for, for success in the classroom. The staff at Lent School has a deep connection and relationship with the families. I have supported admin and teachers who go above and beyond, like assessing home, assessing home visits to deliver food boxes for families. During my time at Lent, I have seen for several years the revolving doors of leadership that has come through Lent, not providing the community a clear vision through addressing the cultural needs its students and families deserve. The leadership changes, but the students and parents remain always fighting for their school community under many barriers. I believe the transition of Lent School to the DLI program and moving the neighborhood school to Marysville will create bigger barriers for our students and families. Lent's families deserve to have access to their neighborhood school. And that's her testimony. I just want to say thank you to Hua for allowing me to give it to the Board. Thank you.
Byrony McMahon.
Hello, everyone. My name is Byrony McMahon. She/her pronouns, M-C-M-A-H-O-N, and I have with me Xander Levine.
Hello, I'm Xander, L-E-V-I-N-E.
And we are here to share with you guys today some celebrations of amazing student achievement at Cleveland High School and Lincoln High School. So, to begin with Cleveland, our boys soccer team took second in the league and went to the quarterfinals at state. Our girls soccer team took fourth in the league and went to the state playoffs. Our volleyball team was fourth in the league. Our pig mice, which is our robotics team, earned the entrepreneurship award. Our jazz ensemble took second place at the Clackamas Jazz Festival in the 6A Division. And our wind symphony won the PIL high school band contest. Our wrestling team defended their PIL title for the 11th year in a row, with 13 athletes going to state, and many of our swim team students went to districts as well. Our girls basketball went to the state playoffs, and our boys' basketball won the PIL championship for the first time in 60 years. Our speech and debate also won overall at state in the 6A Division, and our Cleveland High School dance team, Tenacity, won the Metro Dance Competition this year. So those were some awesome things that happened at Cleveland.
Byrony, you also had a student who won the state championship for girls golf.
Okay, well, yes, we had, we had a champion golf girl.
Not at all. Some highlights worth sharing about Lincoln High School. Over the weekend, the men's tennis team won the state title and also won the men's singles title. The girls also had a strong showing at the women's state competition. Boys basketball, or boys baseball, sorry, went from four wins last year to 14 wins this year, making solid progress. Lincoln student Kyler Wong was named a presidential scholar by the Department of Education and the whole country. Tomorrow marks the majority completion of the new Lincoln High School, which is very exciting. In student leadership, with the help of the McCain Institute, student leaders have been creating a project known as TIES, together through empathic storytelling. And you can walk our halls and find over 400, like, student-written stories that share experiences. They're all anonymous, and you just, you read them, and they bring you to tears, some of them, or make you smile or laugh. They're, they're pretty great. That's inspiring. And they might be presenting to Washington, DC in the summer. Lincoln's FBLA swept many first, second, and third-place awards at state. Girls' golf team and boys' golf team got fourth at state, and ethics team won the state championship and competed in nationals.
And we came up here today just to say that in a time where lots of hardships are happening, that there's always something to celebrate. Students are amazing, and they do amazing things every day. And so we wanted to come up here and share some stuff that happened at Cleveland-Lincoln, and hopefully see some more students out there who want to share the amazing celebrations that their students have also achieved. So thank you for listening to us, and remember, PPS students do so much and are so excellent in so many ways, and we appreciate the work that this Board does to ensure that excellence is maintained. Thank you. This was also inspired by Jordan Cooper. Just want to put that out there.
And that was just a little bit of the many great things.
Can we please, can we please do this at every meeting?
Oh, no. Actually, yes.
I thought our Lincoln Jazz Ensemble also won the state championship this weekend, too, Xander. Is that true?
Perhaps.
Maybe?
Now it looks like I can.
Okay.
And for those who don't know, Byrony's going to be our new student representative next year, so congratulations, Byrony.
Next, we have Chris Riser.
Chris Riser, R-I-S-E-R-E-H-M. The list of harms committed by this administration against students and educators in the last two months are too numerous to mention, to say nothing of the last year, let alone the last five. And with the renewal of the superintendent's contract, the Board itself became complicit in the harm. Each and every one of you. Jackson, I want to thank you for consistently advocating for students and speaking truth to power, even though your truth is dismissed and your vote isn't even counted. Thank you for your free labor to advocate for your peers and those who are coming up behind you. We see you. I understand this forum isn't about the Board of Directors actually learning from below. It's about absorbing the time and energies of those targeted for marginalization into a political void while giving that community the illusion of being heard. But this is for the record. In the consent agenda, there were two settlements for $85,000 and $50,000 respectively. One was for a workers' comp claim. Otherwise, we have no idea why you are passing off taxpayer dollars for mistakes that this administration has made. We can't know. We don't know. And there's no accountability for a superintendent because it's not affecting his paycheck. He's taking money from taxpayers and paying out improper IEP claims, folks who aren't getting their service minutes. He's paying out folks who should have gotten workers' comp, which I'm pretty sure that's what that $50,000 is for, or 85, I can't remember which is which now. None of that actually impacts any of you in any meaningful way. You're taking taxpayer money to pay for the harms that you cause. That's wild. So how can we possibly hold the folks that sit in these seats accountable? When you guys can continue to make mistakes, and then you can pay for it off of the backs of the taxpayers? That is unethical. But it's a brilliant system to set up if you want to maintain control or the illusion of control, and do whatever it is that you want to do while the community suffers. At Oakley Green, we have an excellent certified educator who began the year as a long-term sub that does not have special education certification, but she's actually serving 28 of our students on IEPs, whose minutes range from 45 minutes a week to 180 minutes a week. This incredible educator who stepped into this role is paying for the courses required to be certified to teach special education students, except when she wins that PPS lottery. She's paying $20,000 out of her own pocket to serve our most vulnerable students. My time is already up, but I think it's really inappropriate that you guys have systematically ignored the students of Harriet Tubman Middle School. They have continually come to your door.
Mr. Riser, could you finish up your last thought, please?
Yep. And those are our black students that you guys claim to serve, and the fact that there is, like, radio silence with those kids is appalling. You guys are not living up to your charge and to your paperwork, and it's going to come back. It's going to come back on you guys, and it's not going to be pretty when it does. So I just behoove
Thank you.
the folks at this table to come to us and not just pop in for 30 seconds, Amy.
Mr. Riser.
But to actually spend time listening to and learning from the students and educators. You can't figure out what's going on in the classroom
Mr. Riser.
and you're only there for 30 seconds.
Thank, thank you for your testimony.
Charity Fain.
Welcome.
Yeah, hi. My name is Charity Fain, and that is spelled F-A-I-N. I'm a parent at Sunnyside Environmental School with two children there. I'm also the current secretary of the PTA and a former president of the PTA. And the first thing I wanted to bring up is, I hope you all have seen the letter from 30 PTAs that are very much against the cuts. And I have to say, when I read that letter, I was filled with anger, anger at the impacts this is going to cause, when there's no need financially for this. You see, I have a neurodiverse son, whose school has always been hard, hard for him. And, you know, he's, he's tag identified, and he still can't really manage school very well. And this last year for us has been hell. It has been the hardest thing I've ever had to do as a mother, because he's sitting in that classroom coming back in, and he would either hide under his desk, shut down, or he would strike out and hit and kick and have three room sweeps on him, because he couldn't manage the physicalness of returning, the loudness, the voices. Getting back into a schoolroom was hard. But I will say, the teachers and staff at Sunnyside and us, we came up with a plan. The vice principal there met with him every morning and every afternoon and most lunches. The counselors met with him. The spets ed met with him. The paras met with him. I went to his doctor and got him new meds, and we started him in therapy. And now he's turned around. But that took a team. That took all of us for him. And I wish I could say my child was an edge case and not the norm, but we all know that there are many, many children like my son who need the help and the supports. And what you're cutting are the teams. So when we did, we did an assessment for him this year to get him into special ed, and I paid for his therapist to come there, and I'm lucky that I have the privilege to afford that, right? How many families don't? And the first thing his therapist said to me was, my God, that room is small. It is small, because these are old buildings. They weren't designed for 30 kids to sit in a classroom, right? And you sit here with your budgets that I have looked at, and you think, ah, you know, three or four more kids. That classroom doesn't magically grow in size, right? It's just more kids in a room for a child that has trouble processing. And my time is up, too, and what I want to say, you Board members are our representatives in this process. We have no say as parents. We elect you to be our voice. You have power in this. You can say no. You can vote no. You set the agenda, the vision, the strategy. That is your responsibility, and that's what we elected you to do. So vote no on this until you put teachers who are frontline and students first, because no kid should have to go through what my son would do.
Thank you.
Sophia Ralph Dreves.
Good evening. My name is Sophia Dreves. It's spelled D-R-E-V-E-S, and I go by she/her. I'm a parent of a native Spanish-speaking child at Bridger Elementary School. She's currently in kindergarten. We will be directly impacted by the SEGC recommendation to move Bridger Spanish DLI to Lent. I have two main statements to make tonight. My child has 12 years ahead in her PPS education, and I want to understand how the DLI program at Lent will be supported and grown, truly grown, into a regional hub for DLI. This is a seismic shift, and for it to be successful, the investment from PPS needs to be there. When I asked this question at a recent parent night, there was no clear answer from representatives, and there was only mention of investment in the gymnasium at Lent. That's, that's not a path to success for my child's 12 next years of education. The program at Bridger has existed for many years, and the surrounding community and services have grown to be a successful and vibrant place. To uproot this and not have an idea of how it will be nurtured and grown is troublesome, at least. Bridger has worked hard to provide alternate I want to understand how PPS will invest in Lent whole-school DLI program and facilities? How is PPS going to provide intensive increased support during this Bridger-to-Lent transition? Myself and others need to hear this commitment to trust the decision will be successful and it won't be undone in another few years. As you know, the Bridger community has already sustained 10 major changes in the past 10 years. So if you vote yes, I urge you to make alongside your vote, a public, strong commitment tonight to Lent as Southeast Spanish DLI flagship. And this is more than providing bus routes and a gymnasium. Putting that aside, I want to communicate two things that are very disturbing to me about the proposal. The first is watching PPS make exceptions to its own stated goals. First, I've heard and read, you've said you want to eliminate single-strand co-located programs and eliminate K-8 schools. Well, both of these will happen if you vote yes. Allowing Atkinson to keep a single strand of Spanish DLI because their community put up resistance is simply not a fact-based decision and is not equitable. That's what I was told when I asked, what's the reason? Why does Atkinson get to keep the single strand? Oh, resistance from the community. Well, what about resistance from my Spanish DLI community at Bridger? What about the resistance from the Lent community that has a 27-minute walk to Marysville, crossing 205, 92nd, and 82nd? There has been so much emphasis on socioeconomic brackets and social justice. It's appalling to me that this has not been discussed. Secondly, shrinking the Bridger school boundaries and replacing it with a whole-school K-8 focus option, like Creative Science, and giving guaranteed entry to neighborhood families is espousing gentrification. And, you know, the boundaries would be west of 82nd and north of Division. To me, that's just not equitable and frankly dissonant to the headline of the project, which is enrollment balancing. My time is up. Please, when you vote tonight, keep in mind those families crossing those big avenues. And please ask yourselves why that Lent neighborhood walk is more palatable to you than the Atkinson families crossing Division. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. And muchisimas gracias. Se habla español. Just to make that clear.
Thank you.
Nadia Coronado.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nadia Coronado Sheeaia, C-O-R-O-N-A-D-O. I've spoken here before, but as a quick review, I've been with PPS since 1987, first as a student, then as a student teacher, and now I'm an ESL teacher. I also have three children who have attended three PPS schools over the past nine years. I'm deeply invested in the success of public education, and I want every PPS school to be a safe, welcoming, and engaging learning environment for every Portland child and family. I am here, like my ESL colleagues before, to bring attention to the district's new formula for calculating English language learners. Currently, one student counts as one whole student. Under the new formula, four students count as one. As you can imagine, this will change how many students an ESL teacher will be assigned to support. I'm here with 16 years' experience as a language specialist, with bilingual skills, with degrees in behavioral science, how the brain learns, and education. I have taught through a combination of push-in support, pull-out small groups, co-teaching with content teachers. I've instructed whole class with Gen Ed, ELL, and students with IEPs. I've done it with district-approved methods with the science curriculum and later the writing curriculum. I've used PSYOP, GLAD, QTEL, DUTRO, and letters methods. I've taught in hallways, in drafty offices located behind gyms, and in shared classrooms where I have to daily wheel in a cart with my supplies on it. And I'm telling you, with all of my experience, I will be less successful with my students and their families with this new formula. I've had quite a few meetings and personal conversations with various district leaders. I have shared that counting a student as less than one full student is disgraceful. I have shared that using a single test to dictate how much a student is worth is disgraceful. I have carefully explained that just because a student can choose the right picture of a man wearing a watch, or can tell you the difference, three differences between two pictures, does not mean that that student can read and write at grade level. A student who is counted as one quarter of a student with this new formula will need the same amount of attention and connection, love and care, and thoughtful expertise to get them the reading intervention support they deserve and the writing practice they need in order to achieve English proficiency. In this district, students with limited English proficiency have the lowest five-year graduation rate at 66%. They have the second-lowest four-year graduation rate at 65%. And we can all expect the graduation rate to dip further as the decision is made to provide less support to our students learning English. I leave with two questions. The district says that the ESL FTE has increased by 10, and when you look at the budget, that's only been an increase for one for the entire district. So what's up with that discrepancy? And question two, the district receives $16 million from the state for ESL services, and they're only reporting 12 million. What happened to the missing $4 million for our ESL services for our students? Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa McDonald.
Y'all received a copy of this?
Yes.
Petition signed by a lot of people supporting this.
Hello. My name is Melissa McDonald, M-A-C-D-O-N-A-L-D. I have been a lead at Glencoe Elementary since I started working for Nutrition Services in 2004. I would like to tell you about a few of my coworker's struggles this year. Roseway Heights had to wash and bag 675 servings of fruit or vegetables daily with a two-hour assistant, who, by the way, quit to go to a job that paid better. The lead had to work two to two-and-a-half hours of overtime daily to achieve her daily task. Rigler had to work for three months with no assistant, feeding 120 for breakfast and 200 to 250 for lunch. She also had the supper program and the fruit and vegetable program. She has put in her two weeks' notice. She's had enough. She has worked, overworked with no support from management. These are just a couple of examples of what most of my coworkers have had to deal with this year. Custodians have been feeling the stress of being short-staffed also. They are constantly getting pulled from their assigned school to help out at another school who is short-staffed. Teachers are having to clean their own classrooms just so their students can have a clean and sanitary place to learn. Let's face it. We need more employees to achieve that goal. You, school board members, need to make sure that the starting wage for nutrition service workers and custodians is competitive with not only, with not only other school districts, but also with other jobs similar to what kind of work we do. The struggle is real and it is stressful for everyone involved. I make about $32,000 a year, and that's only if I work the summer program. Could you live off of $32,000 a year? I don't think so. Do the right thing and make our wages competitive.
Thank you.
Greg Burrell, who is virtual.
All right. You can all hear me? I take it?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to start my timer so that I know how I'm doing. My name is Greg Burrell, B-U-R-R-I-L-L. Board directors, superintendent, fellow educators, parents, students, and community. On the board, only Julia Brim Edwards and Amy Konstam remember when I used to come and testify regularly to the school board, right? This is my first time in years because in my 17 years with PPS, I haven't seen that our voices are listened to. But I really decided that I had to comment on what I consider to be the collapse of public education. A few years ago, we were hearing testimony about cover-ups about lead in the water supply. Now we're hearing cover-ups about sped minutes, right? But my colleague, Chris Reiser, is angry. I'm just sad. Nadia Coronado provided details about what really happens and what's really necessary in DLI. And but, here's the thing. A careful review of your budget shows that in the past five years, you've nearly doubled the number of highly-paid administrators, many of whom have little idea of what actually happens in schools judging by the misleading and self-serving press releases I've seen, right? I remember telling you that you could learn a lot from substitute teachers because we work in so many buildings. You can now learn from the epidemic of unfilled jobs that only those whose careers require that they work under these conditions are willing to do. I'd like to thank Danny Cage for letting us know about the struggle of canceled buses. I'd like to, I love the testimony that he gave about children being forced to cross I-205, 92nd Avenue, and 82nd Avenue to get to, oh, and pass homeless camps to get to their new school. The thing that I want to remind you is that kids are amazing learners. Look at the testimony that you heard from our young people, right? This is, despite what we failed to do to support children with discipline, with food, with buses, with clean classrooms, they learn because that's what kids do. And so, all I can say is, I hope that at some point soon, you all realize that Portland Public Schools is collapsing and we need to do something. Teachers that I sub for are resigning, right? So I don't know. I just, I wanted to make sure that I told you just how strongly I feel that Portland Public Schools is falling apart. Inadequate buses, inadequate meals, inadequate custodial services. And I'll stop here because my time is up. Thank you so much for listening. And please, do something.
Thank you, Mr. Burrell.
I just wanted to call the students that didn't come up again, if that's okay. Ramona Freeman and Leila Whitehead. That concludes who have signed up for the general poll of comment.
Okay. Thanks, Kara. Thank you to everyone for the testimony. Next up on our agenda is the 2022 to 2025 agreement between amalgamated transit union, ATU, and Portland Public Schools. Superintendent Guerrero, would you or staff like to provide us with some highlights of the agreement?
Yes. Thank you, Vice Chair Scott. I'm pleased to have here tonight Genevieve Rowe, our Director of Employee and Labor Relations, to share with you highlights of a new agreement with our ATU partners. I know we also have here with us, and I want to welcome Beth Blumklotz and Jimmy Appelhans, who are also going to be joining us here tonight to speak on this topic. Genevieve?
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, Directors, Student Representative. The item before you is a three-year contract between PPS and ATU, the union that represents our very important drivers in student transportation. Our ATU members primarily transport our special needs students. They're responsible for approximately one-third of our transportation routes of the district. And transportation, transporting these students creates access to educational services for these students. As you know, and everyone knows, recruiting and retaining bus drivers has been a significant challenge to serving students and families this year. This contract includes a substantial increase to driver wages. We believe that the increased wages along with our benefit package will put PPS in a stronger position to recruit and retain these skilled and caring drivers, which in turn reduces delays and last-minute cancellations for families that have such a disruptive impact on students and our families, excuse me. The bargaining teams were able to reach tentative agreement on a three-year contract in only three bargaining sessions, which is remarkably fast, and that is a testament to the relationship between the two groups. And we're happy to have this before you tonight.
Genevieve, could you, you mentioned the significant wage increase. Could you talk specifically about what that is?
So we were before you in October with a $3 an hour increase to wages, and then the wages substantially increased again this round. So July 1, they will receive another 17.9% increase to the wages, bringing their wages up to a little over $27 an hour for the starting wage.
Great. Thank you. And do we also, did you say, do we have some of our ATU partners with us today? Either Beth Blumklotz or Jimmy Appelhans? Come on down.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Jimmy Appelhans, they/them pronouns. Thank you for having us, school board. Superintendent Guerrero, it's been quite a year. Yeah, Genevieve already mentioned, back in October, the district came to us with a three-hour increase raise with the promise of starting negotiations as soon as possible in January. I want to thank you for following through on that promise. It speaks to the mutual respect that has grown between us. The historically large pay increase has not gone unnoticed as well and has convinced talented and experienced bus drivers to stay with the district through the most challenging year I've seen in my 10 years of service as a bus driver. In fact, while covering a route last month, I was assaulted by a student. And honestly, more troubling than being physically hit is the thought that that student now has that on their record because we, as a district, failed to adequately staff our programs and provide for that student the support they needed. We ask that you consider these things while working with other district workers that we work side-by-side with every day. All the working groups, the district, and especially the students all benefit from favorable contracts that contain livable wages and support for the students. We stand behind our fellow district workers demanding no layoffs. We stand behind our custodians and nutrition service workers who need competitive wages now in order to hire enough staff to make our schools safe and healthy places for the children in our community. And once again, thank you for coming to the table and following through on your promises. We really appreciate it and we see it.
Hi, I'm Beth Blumklotz. And like yourselves, I'm a volunteer, serving to improve the lives of my coworkers, your staff, and our students. And specifically, we serve our students in special education. And I just really, just sitting back here and hearing everyone, it reminds me when Jimmy and I first started and how we really felt like we had to teach everyone about our value. We had to give examples and so forth. I really hope that you're hearing our fellow coworkers. Because when we lose staff, when we lose coworkers, it costs so much more for the district to hire more and to train and so forth, marketing, to try to bring some others in. Our reputation as a school district is not positive in the communities. When I listen to parents, when I listen to my coworkers in other departments, even some of my friends across the country have even heard about, you know, Portland Public School District. We have some improvements that, you know, really need to be made. And from Jimmy and my vantage... We really appreciate it and we see it.
Hi, I'm Beth Blumklotz, and like yourselves, I'm a volunteer, serving to improve the lives of my coworkers, your staff, and our students. And specifically, we serve our students in special education. And I just really, just sitting back here and hearing everyone, it reminds me when Jimmy and I first started and how we really felt like we had to teach everyone about our value, we had to give examples and so forth. I really hope that you're hearing our fellow coworkers because when we lose staff, when we lose coworkers, it costs so much more for the district to hire more and to train and so forth, marketing, to try to bring some others in. Our reputation as a school district is not positive in the communities. When I listen to parents, when I listen to my coworkers in other departments, even some of my friends across the country have even heard about, you know, Portland Public School District. We have some improvements that, you know, really need to be made, and from Jimmy and my vantage point, it can be made. And it's hurtful when you have to prove to your employers and the school board, who are also volunteers voted in, that what we are saying is accurate, that what we are saying is true. We believe that you do know, and we really hope that you listen to the voices that have been shared and the messages that have been shared today and the other days, and vote in favor of what's best for your staff so you don't have to hire more, and what's most in favor of our students so they can want to come to school and they can learn and not be so stressed out. I know I personally have offered to volunteer in another aspect on three different occasions as a cultural and racial, to help out with our cultural and racial equity and equality here at the district, and not one time was my offer taken up. However, I've been told about how wonderful I am about bringing people together and how I can see different viewpoints and help people hear people, but yet I was never called upon. And so I just want to bring that to your attention, not to put anybody down, but just really please, when you go to bed at night, make sure that you can feel good that what you've done is really meaningful and helpful with our district. And with that, I thank you also for the time. I am retiring as a volunteer. I will continue to support Jimmy and the other representatives, but I feel like that I have done my part and I am ready to just be a regular coworker and attend meetings and not organize and lead. And so I thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6511?
So moved.
Yes, thank you. Director Constant moves and Director Holland seconds the adoption. Is there any board discussion?
I just want to thank our drivers for the amazing work they do. I know it's not an easy job, and I really appreciate the recognition of the way that especially Ms. Rowe has shown up and helped facilitate a positive agreement.
And I also want to say thanks to both district staff and our labor partners for having such a smooth process. I mean, three bargaining sessions means that we come to the table with pretty shared values. And I know that's been a long time coming. Beth wasn't always, it wasn't always that way a few years ago, so that's, that is a reflection of an investment in the relationship and in the district's expression of value for, for what you do for our kids, so. We've got, we've still got more work to do. We've still got some other contracts to settle, but we see you. We see you, Purple.
Any other comments? I, I will just add, I'm excited to support this contract. I think it goes in exactly the right direction, and I also think it's a symbol of things to come. And I think that as we, as we come out of this pandemic, the working world has changed, and I think every employer, whether it's public or private, needs to recognize that. And I, and I think this contract is a step in the right direction, as Director Constant said, I think there's, there's more to be coming. I do want to say that, that there are, there are costs and trade-offs, and I think those are worth it. It's why I'm excited to, you know, to vote for this, but as I, as I hope everyone sticks around for the budget conversation later, there are trade-offs to these decisions, and I think that's something that we want to bring all of the community into as, as we struggle with that. Resources are not infinite, resources are not even plentiful, but this is definitely the right decision, and I look forward to more contracts after this as well that, that give some of the similar types of increases to our hard-working employees who deserve it. Any other comments? Great. And with that, is there any public comment? Not public comment. The Board will now vote on Resolution 6511, the 2022 to 25 Agreement between Amalgamated Transit Union and School District Number One, J. Molina County, Oregon. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6511 is approved by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Southeast Enrollment and Program Balancing. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this next item?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Scott. As Directors know, Phase One of Southeast Enrollment and Program Balancing began in fall 2020. At that time, it resulted in the conversion of five K-8 schools, new boundaries and program assignments into Kellogg Middle School, which opened this past fall. In May, the Board adopted a Phase Two charge centered on converting Harrison Park, also from a K-8 to a middle school, while maintaining an objective to increase enrollment at Lane Middle School as well. Joining us this evening, we have Deputy Superintendent Claire Hertz and our Director of Enrollment and Transfer Judy Brennan, our two regional superintendents, Esther Dr. O. and Margaret Calvert, who, along with other district staff and members of the Southeast Guiding Coalition, made up of representatives from across the different school communities, have facilitated and led this process. I want to thank them for their efforts in this very complex strand of work, but I'm going to turn it over to Claire at this point.
Good evening. I was just going to say good evening, Vice Chair.
Yeah, Andrew handed me the gavel, so I think that means I'm technically chair until he comes back in the room.
Good evening, Superintendent Guerrero, Board of Directors, and Student Representative Weinberg. We have worked with community representatives and school principals for two years from, with twenty schools in the southeast. They have given their time and commitment to find the best possible solution for balancing enrollment in our southeast schools. Tonight, I bring my recommendation for the Southeast Enrollment and Program Balancing to you for approval. I would also like to thank the three board liaisons for their support in the Southeast Enrollment and Program Balancing work, Director Julia Brim Edwards, Director Ali Lowry, and Chair Michelle DePass. They gave countless hours to attend Southeast Guiding Coalition meetings and community engagement sessions, and have listened to the many voices in the southeast school communities. We bring tonight an updated resolution with clarifying language for Lent and Bridger English Scholar Programs. I will ask Director of Enrollment and Transfer Judy Brennan to speak to this in a moment. We have also invited Southeast Guiding Coalition members from the most impacted schools and with the highest number of students of color to speak to you tonight. They represent Lent Elementary, Harrison Park K-8, and Bridger Elementary. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Director Brennan to talk through the changes made to the resolution, and she will be introducing our coalition members who have come to speak to you tonight.
Good evening. We'd like to point out just a few resolution adjustments. So, there's an updated resolution in your packet, and I would call your attention to recital F, where we've added a reference to a map. Thank you for the suggestion of having an attachment so that this is always part of the archive of the geographic changes that are included in the proposal. More importantly, within the resolution, under 1D, there is revised language, and 1E has been added. The intent of those changes is to make it clearer for any families affected by these, by the proposal, on what their rights are as students who either live in the Lent neighborhood or in the Bridger neighborhood. So those are all of the adjustments to the draft resolution for your review tonight. I'm very pleased to introduce some of our SEGC members, who we are going to make space for, to come and share with you a few words. And so I'd like to introduce, and please come on down, from, and come all at once, if you could. So from Bridger Elementary, we have Dee Reddy and Oscar Campos. From Harrison Park, we have Marissa Bryman, who's also speaking on behalf of Michelle Harada, who couldn't be here this evening. And from Lent Elementary, we have Carmen Flores. Marissa Bryman is a virtual. Thank you all.
Welcome. Hello. Hello.
Welcome. Feel free. Go ahead. Oh, I guess we.
She's virtual.
Hello. Okay, sorry about that. Hi, thank you for having me. I'm commenting, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm commenting on behalf of myself and Harrison Park's other apparent representative, Michelle Harada. So, the, the drivers of this whole process were the opening of two new middle schools, one of which will be Harrison Park, and as well as to give our students a comprehensive middle school experience, which hasn't been offered in the K-8 model. Harrison Park's a uniquely multicultural school community within PPS, and our teachers really care about our students and choose to be here. We, Michelle, as a BIPOC parent, enjoys how her kids blend into the rich diversity of the student body. Our community asks to stay together and not to be split up among existing elementary schools, and we're happy that this will be the result of this process. We also wanted students to remain geographically close to where they live, and the SEGC has also been able to achieve this with our K-5 students moving to the Clark Building. Mandarin DLI programs will be located in the J. District at the elementary and middle school levels at the request of our Chinese community. And Harrison Park will be undergoing some minor reforms this summer and that summer, which will benefit our students when we transition. And as we celebrate these wins, we also need to mention some of the challenges in this process. So not being allowed to include the inner southeast schools has really hampered our ability to balance enrollment. And Harrison Park is kind of on the furthest east side of PPS. We were limited by geography. Kellogg will end up over-enrolled despite shrinking the neighborhood boundary in Phase Two, and the Coalition was informed really late in the process that changing Spanish DLI feeders to Kellogg was not actually on the table, which caused, we felt, a lot of confusion and disagreement in the Coalition. As we know, funding's tied to enrollment numbers, so we're concerned that opening Harrison Park Middle School that will not be adequately funded and will be less, much less so than Kellogg. So even though we have one of the most diverse student populations in the district, we, we also had a difficult time getting feedback from BIPOC families at our school. We didn't have an appropriate venue to communicate what was happening in meetings, and participation in focus groups was really affected by COVID protocols and tech limitations for our families. So even though our parents haven't been outspoken like some of the other schools, we all really want the best for our kids and believe that our students deserve an equitable, positive middle school experience. So going forward, we really hope the district will consider temporary base funding that's for schools that might be under-enrolled. And we expect that our school will provide a comparable middle school experience to other PPS middle schools regardless of enrollment numbers. We really hope the Board understands that removing any of the Harrison Park feeder schools from the proposal as-is would reduce our enrollment even more. And there's also a risk of Harrison Park losing Title I funding with more affluent communities joining ours, so we hope that temporary minimum funding will prevent us from losing the specialists and supports that our students really count on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Dee, and this is Oscar. We are parents at, we have kids both at Bridger and Kellogg Middle School. And just for a little bit of background, Bridger is currently a three-strand school. We have two grades, we have two classes of immersion and one of neighborhood in each of our grades. Bridger has been very vocal during this process because we are the only community that's been facing the loss of both our building and our, and each other. With this process beginning in 2020, we felt picked on, and we felt like our value and our strength as a community was being undermined and disregarded by PPS and other school communities. But we've come to realize over this process that we occupy a very complicated location in PPS. We are in a narrow half-mile swath between Southeast Seventieth and Southeast Eighty-second. We have million-dollar houses on our western border, and we've got car dealerships and affordable housing on our eastern border. We are equal parts BIPOC and non-BIPOC, equal parts privileged and underserved, and equal parts everything in between. Our SDLI families value the benefits of a strong two-strand program with a culturally responsive bilingual staff that goes beyond teachers to administration and wraparound services and fed services in our students' native language. But as the neighborhood gentrifies, there are almost no native speakers left in our neighborhood catchment. Our neighborhood families value a centrally-located school with good walkability, but they suffer the untenable and inequitable logistics of an unbalanced co-location. They have no way to maintain healthy class sizes with a single strand of neighborhood. And as enrollment naturally ebbs and flows, students do not have the chance to experience normal dynamic shifts from year to year with different classmates and the ability to have reprieve from personal conflicts. Unfortunately, we cannot say that our whole community is united on a clear path forward. For every SDLI family who loves and wants to keep a cohesive and established community at Bridger, there's a neighborhood family who loves having a strong, well-enrolled neighborhood school. We have spent decades building a community we love and are proud of, but have not been able to overcome the disparity in performance and achievement between our unbalanced strands. Like so many other PPS schools, the status quo at Bridger benefits many, but continues to harm our most historically underserved students.
As a Guiding Coalition member, a bilingual parent, and a PPS high school counselor, I believe that the data shows the most effective way to close the achievement gap for a historically underserved student is to create intentional school communities that contain a diversity of incomes, race, and ethnicity. For a language immersion program, this is most effective accomplished through a model that concentrates and optimizes the use of woefully limited number of bilingual teachers and support staff. The Spanish DLI program is designed to shrink the achievement gap for emergent bilingual students. The Lent location will provide, will prioritize a low transportation burden for native families. For these and many more reasons, the Spanish DLI program is a social justice program. And unlike its, and unlike other immersion programs that provide language enrichment. The power of the DLI, of the Spanish DLI program at Kellogg has come through the intentional community that was built via the concentration of available bilingual teachers and support staff to one location. PPS did this. PPS was intentionally prioritizing the needs of our emergent bilingual students. Because of the hard work of PPS, it has created a culturally responsive school, community where all students benefit from rich racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic diversity. This success needs to be replicated at the K-5 level. Please put our community at ease and tell us how you are going, how you are going to be intentional in prioritizing emergent bilinguals at Lent while supporting the students that will no longer be at Lent. This is no perfect, there's no perfect, perfect solution, but this proposal disrupts the status quo by evenly distributing the required change across all communities rather than adhering to historically discriminatory practice that of placing all the burden of change on low-income and brown and black communities. We cannot continue to expect the same underserved, least-equipped community to always bear the trauma of correcting the natural ebb and flow of demographic changes. We hear the outcry about the number of impacted households, but ask you to recognize that this is mainly from communities which have historically enjoyed uninterrupted stability and positive outcomes. We hear the outcry about the number of impacted households, but ask you to recognize that this is mainly from communities which have, yeah, intentionally, uninterrupted stability. There is, there is also criticism that communities have not had enough time to consider the changes. Will there ever be enough time to, will there ever be enough time for any of us to come to terms with the perceived loss of our privilege and comfort? As an educated Latino male with privilege, I know that I and my family and my children will be okay. I'm not, I'm not only here in front of you for me and my family, but specifically for the emergent bilingual families that need this program to close the achievement gap.
We ask that you agree that a no vote today is simply untenable. The opening of Harrison Park has already been delayed too long, while those students and our Bridger neighborhood students continue to wait beyond their peers to achieve a comprehensive middle school experience. We stand in solidarity with the Lent community to advocate for a yes-and proposal path forward. We require and demand a commitment to that community to create a transition plan on their terms and in their best interests. We urge PPS staff not to forget the need for additional educational We ask that you agree that a no vote today is simply untenable. The opening of Harrison Park has already been delayed too long, while those students and our Bridger neighborhood students continue to wait beyond their peers to achieve a comprehensive middle school experience. We stand in solidarity with the Lent community to advocate for a yes-and proposal path forward. We require and demand a commitment to that community to create a transition plan on their terms and in their best interests. We urge PPS staff not to forget the need for additional educational assistance in the Bridger neighborhood classrooms next year to help our students get caught up and ready to join incoming creative science students in 2023. Every day that underserved communities continue to stay in limbo is another day that we keep failing our kids who are already falling behind and already falling through the cracks. A no vote today leaves our most vulnerable children foundering in a swamp of unknown timelines and outcomes. They remain unsupported, unconsidered, and perpetually less than their peers. This proposal engenders systemic support for historically underserved communities by creating intentional and well-enrolled programs at Bridger and Lent. It reaches target enrollment at the most diverse and lowest SES-K5 schools and the three outer southeast middle schools. It's not perfect, and there's a lot of work to be done by district staff to make this proposal work for everybody, but it's a great place to start, and it's better than the status quo.
Hello, everybody. My name is Carmen Flores. I'm a little bit nervous because I've never done this before. I am a parent, and I have worked for the Lent community for 20 years. So my first thing that I want to say after, it's my first time for 20 years of inequities and things that have happened in my community that I have been here to speak to you. And the first thing that I would like to say is enough is enough. The inequities that our community has faced over the last 20 years, none of you could tell me, but I could tell you every single one. Yet the people that are sitting here making this decision has, has no idea on the history of our building and basing it off of just data that they've collected in the last two years. So I want to add to your data that is missing. The revolving door of admin, my daughter is in fourth grade and has had four, now going to be five, new principals, because next year we will have a new principal. And yes, and she's a fifth, going to be in fifth grade. The, the problem with the revolving door, the problem of admin being placed by PPS at our buildings who are almost ready to go out the door, who no longer even work in PPS, that get placed there because of behavioral issues in their other schools. The inequities of having our children sitting on the floor, eating on the floor, while there is a, an apparent rat problem in our building in two years of us having to fight to solve that problem, that's all your data that you don't have on your, on your sheets and all the things that you're looking at. And those are the things that we have been fighting for, that I have seen 20 years. I grew up in that school. I'm only 42 years old, but I started at 22 and have been advocating and have learned to be a parent, have learned to be an advocate from this community. The inequities and the, and the, the having to make this decision, and I've been to every Southeast Guiding Coalition meeting, I went to them when I was in a different time zone, when I was on vacation, I didn't miss a single one, yet I was the only one from my community there present. No admin, nothing. And, and just the, the issues that are at hand and the lack of, of looking for us, and I have some other things I was going to say, but if you heard me speak before, you know that I speak from the heart. I don't lie, I speak for my community, I speak for the people, because that, this is, this ultimately, this decision is not going to affect my child. As, as they said, it, I have, I have the ability, I have the resources, you could say whatever, but I'm here to speak for everyone who this does affect. Because this is the school that is the lowest social, socioeconomic level, yet they're the ones that are going to be the highest impact. They're the ones that are here that are advocating to be heard, that aren't being heard, that haven't been heard for the last 20 years. Removing the English neighborhood program adversely affects some of the most impacted families in our community who face racism and loss of challenges and trauma. The Southeast Guiding Coalition process did not do adequate outreach to the most impacted communities in Lent. Removing the English language program from the school would hurt the very students that the PPS school board and district leaders say they are committed to advance racial equity. Doing this against a community's wish without their input or involvement is precisely against racial equity, despite claims around data and scores on achievement tests. For those that have worked in, in education, they know, you know, that it is more than just what's on the data and passing a test. Our BIPOC community needs to be heard, and this is ridiculous. And that is all I can say. And if you, as parents, who can sit here and, and say this is not going to affect you, of course it's not going to affect you, because you guys, it doesn't affect you. And it's not going to affect me, and it's not going to affect everybody that's in this room, but it's going to affect the community that has been the only constant thing. And I'm tired of hearing that the only place students of color can find success is out of their community. And that is exactly what you guys are doing. You are telling them that their success can only be found outside of their community, and that is ridiculous.
Thank you. Thank you for the testimony, for joining us tonight. Deputy Superintendent Hertz, do you have additional material, or should we?
No, you, you can go ahead, and we're just here to support.
Great, thank you. At this point, let's get a motion on the table. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
There it is.
I haven't had a motion.
To adopt Resolution 6513, and Director Green moves, and Director Holland seconds the adoption of Resolution 6513. And I'm going to ask if there's board discussion. I know we also do have public comment, right? Kara, how many folks do we have signed up? Two people. Does the board want to hear that public comment before our discussion? I'm seeing some nods. Great, are they ready, Kara? I don't know if they're virtual or here, so.
Yes, Stephanie Ramirez Velazquez.
Sorry, sorry. Welcome, and go ahead and state your name, and your time will start when you do.
Hello, my name is Stefania Ramirez Velazquez, R-A-M-I-R-E-Z-V-E-L-A-Z-Q-U-E-Z. I'm a DLI teacher at Lent. I have been working at Lent for five years now, and I'm here today to voice concern about the changes that will happen to Lent School. For many years, Lent has been in constant change, and whether it be changing to K-8 to K-5 this last school year, to having a new administrator almost every year I have been at Lent. There has been consistent changes in our leadership, but something that has always been strong has been the community at Lent. This community has been through a lot and has been together strong. We have stayed strong together and have grown a bond. Lent would not be Lent if not for both, both strands. The amount of exposure students get from each other and the amount of language is being spoken to, spoken to having a diverse staff and community is immense. I feel that Lent is being left out of the table of what is being done to our, our school and our community. When we finally had a meeting for our community over what was being done, we only had one interpreter in Spanish, when in fact, our families speak Vietnamese, Somali, Mandarin, Russian, and more. I saw families leave the, leave the meeting to not being provided the languages that they needed to understand what was happening to the community. I implore you to follow what I teach my students to follow with their hearts. Tu eres mi otro yo. Si te hago daño a ti, me hago daño a mí mismo. Si te amo y respeto, me amo y respeto yo. You are my other me. If I do harm to you, I do harm to myself. If I love and respect you, I love and respect myself. Lead by your actions. Listen to the community. Keep our Ega-Li in our school. I know that we have to meet somewhere in the middle. We welcome the Bridger DLI strand to the community, but please keep our community together.
Thank you.
And virtually, we have Maria Velez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Velez, V-E-L-E-Z, and my pronouns are she/her/ella. Greetings, PPS Board and Superintendent Guerrero. We at Latino Network are in strong support of Spanish DLI at Kellogg Middle School. We're lifting up the voices we've been hearing from our community, and their interest in continuing the pipeline from Lent K5 to Kellogg Middle School for the Spanish DLI program. And this has been a very challenging year for students and families and for Latino Network, one of tremendous growth and impact. Latino Network has learned and reinforced many key lessons, primarily to provide safe space for our community to share, to listen to the community, and uplift their voice. During the pandemic, it was critical to listen even more closely and to immediately adapt programs and meet their needs. Each of us have had to quickly adjust and respond to student needs differently and urgently, and here's one of the ways that we've been listening and trying to adapt to this. Below, what we've been hearing are about key equity issues from the community that we've been learning at the agency. So, for example, as you've heard already in this, this evening, is the revolving door of administration at Lent. Since 2017, Lent has had five different principals, and only Richard Smith was the longest-lasting principal for being at Lent for about three years, but now he has already gone to Kellogg. And while folks are very pleased with Nicole Berg as principal, and we were hoping she was going to continue to strengthen Lent's culture and student outcomes, it sounds, seems like even tonight that she will be leaving again. These administrative turnovers harmed children and disrupted the school culture, leading to a vacuum of leadership advocacy on behalf of Lent School for years. The harm and trauma on Lent students and community caused historic patterns of PPS, PPS management decisions. So for example, again, at Lent and other Title I schools with the majority of students of color, there's been a repository of problematic, problematic PPS employees. So for example, before Superintendent Guerrero even came to the district in 2017, PPS had a pattern of transferring employees with HR or TSPC complaints or accusations, i.e. emotional, physical abuse, or sexual harassment to different schools. This happened with the former principal, Mr. Kandler, who had several staff complaints against him from Oakley Green before being assigned to Lent. And this also happened most egregiously with former climate coach Sam Leach, who, after a series accusations of emotional and physical abuse against children, was assigned to Lent to oversee the discipline at that school. And there are several news reports about this and our Lent School parent response from that time, and you can check that with Pamplum Media or even K2 News. Also, I wanted to highlight here, you know, the PPS facilities, again, that you've kind of heard here, the neglect of Lent School and the area. Basically, around 2017, we also were hearing about the school with the severe rodent infestation, mice, and then rats, and it was common for the children to see the mice run, running in the classroom, and they'd been reading on the ground during circle time. This is on top of three years of students not even being able to drink out of school water fountains because of the lead in the water at the school. The school is an older building, and only recently has PPS invested in construction and seismic improvements to the buildings.
Ms., Ms. Velez?
And now that Lent students can go to a nice school building, it sounds as though they're going to be asked to go to Harrison Park, an older building that's not yet prepared for middle school.
Sorry, Dana, you, you, sorry, you may not have been able to hear the timer that went off. If you could just wrap up your thoughts, that would be great.
I'm almost done, thank you so much. So basically, again, we're just writing in full support that we would like to see Lent go to Kellogg DLI Spanish programming. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for listening on behalf of Latino Network.
Thank you.
There was a student who wanted to read a letter, but I didn't catch her name.
Was there a student who wanted to testify on this matter? Okay, if there is, go ahead and see Kara as we have this conversation. So we did have a motion and a second to adopt this, so now we're going to move on to board discussion, and staff is here to answer any questions. I will open up the floor.
So I'll, I'll jump in, and just to give people a heads up, I have an amendment I'm going to offer, and hopefully at some point we'll have a written version. But I have some comments and I have some questions, some for the superintendent and some for staff. But I had a really hard time. First of all, I want to thank the parents who just spoke and spoke their truth for their communities. So I couldn't sleep last night thinking about all the decisions we're making and how it's going, how it's going to impact, you know, our, our students in southeast schools. The scope was pretty unprecedented, 21 schools, 12 programs. I don't think there's anywhere else in the district that has such a rich and diverse set of programs. And the, the great thing is, coming out of this, is we are going to correct a, something that happened about 15 years ago, which was kids and, students in outer southeast didn't get an equitable middle grades experience, and by opening Kellogg last year and not, or, is that right? The pandemic screwed up my timing, is that last year or this year? Sorry. Opening of Kellogg, and the, this plan to open Harrison Park, I think will make big strides to provide students in outer southeast with an equitable middle grades experience. And for the parents who talked about the enrollment issues at Harrison Park, you can be sure while I'm on the board, I'll be continuing to look at that as I have in the past for students in outer, outer southeast to make sure they get a similar experience to other students in middle grades that have had equitable, robust electives and academic programming. I think it's worth noting that what happened in outer southeast is also on top of Marshall High School closing. And also, you know, the, the discussion that happened tonight about just what's happened over the last year and a half, and how just the uncertainty for communities has really been hard on parents and students and families. And then on top of that, there, out of the 21 schools, there's 30 FTE that are, or teachers that are going to be, that have been cut from those schools. So there's, there's been a lot happening in outer southeast that I think really has created a lot of trauma for families. But I want to thank the principals and the parents who have put in part of that. As I said, the positive impact of this is the opening of Harrison Park, also the enhanced enrollment at Lane, so an often overlooked middle school. And hopefully that will provide their students with, again, a more equitable middle grades experience. I'm also glad to see that the Spanish dual-language program at Kellogg will have strong staff supports, and that will continue. Also, that Creative Science School has a, has a home. And so they're all, those are all positive things that I see in the, in the program. We also provide more stability for, but by changing boundaries and making enrollment shifts, provide some more stability. I do think we're going to need to keep an eye on the numbers if the enrollment declines, as a previous speaker spoke. However, there are also, I think we need to be mindful that 750 kids are going to be bused in this proposal, and it's going to be really important that kids have access to transportation, that they, it, it doesn't mean because they're now bused instead of walking that they can't participate in after-school activities. We need to make sure that there is safe walking patterns for, for schools. So those are all issues that I think, there's a lot of positive things in this proposal, but I, I do have, as I said in the last meeting, some issues, some outstanding issues that I, I wanted to raise from participating in or observing the process over the last year. And the questions I asked at the last meeting, there were several directed to Superintendent Guerrero, and I don't think they're, they're going to be new, but I, with Deputy Superintendent Hertz retiring soon, I think the community is going to really need to know that somebody's has the southeast schools that are going to be over the next, like, tonight is just, is a milestone, it's not the end, but that somebody is going to be caring for and making sure that we have an effective implementation that takes in all the voices, including those who haven't been included so far. And I know I asked you at the last meeting, Superintendent Guerrero, just about who that's going to be or how, how that's going to be structured so that our communities have confidence that there'll be a strong, effective implementation.
It's a good question. Thank you for recognizing Deputy Hertz, who we want to recognize for her service the last number of years here. This is quite the capstone for her, and so, of course, as we identify her successor, we, we do have continuity in senior leadership. You see our two regional superintendents here. As you pointed out, this involves a whole swath of school communities. This is only a particular milestone. There is a whole lot of planning that needs to go in to hear all of those specific details around, from each of the school community's representatives. to hear their advocacy around and work with our school leaders around, what are the specific supports that would be helpful during this pretty massive transition? It's going to be more dramatic for some communities than others. We too, here very clearly, have been hearing since day one in front of the Lent community, you know, have heard the stories. I mean, we heard about the rodents. That's unacceptable. We work to remedy that immediately. But beyond the physical conditions, what are the programmatic supports that we need to make sure are available? So there's a committed team that will, that will request of the board that we preserve the bandwidth to do this job successfully. As you know, we've, I've proposed that we reserve resources so that we have a pool of staffing, whatever that needs to be, after consulting with our school communities, as well as monetary resources. We've heard from a number of our communities, particularly the Lent community, what they believe some of those supports could look like. They're seeing very much within the realm of possibility. We want to talk those through further. But again, that's, that's sort of the next stage of work here is to develop a support plan and to make sure that the implementation, at the time that these changes take place, goes as successfully as possible. We've learned from the past effort in converting to middle schools, you know, what some of the important variables are. And we're going to be extra mindful of those in this process moving forward.
Great, thank you. And then just to continue on that theme, as we heard tonight, the Bridger community, whether it was actually being the original home to, what was the predecessor of the Creative Science School and then moving to K8, having overcrowding issues, that kindergarten having to move out, and now this most recent change, and also having their students now be split and then having a new school community join them. There's been lots of transitions at Bridger. And there was a meeting, I know that Deputy Superintendent Hertz you were at, where the community jointly came up, had some ask. And then the board also got a, a letter that was the yes and letter. And there was important, really important asks in that and letter to help the Bridger community with the transitions and just to hold them this next year so that their students, as all these transitions happen, because they're, they're a highly impacted school. And when I asked the question, the response about the resources they asked for, which were relatively modest, the answer was that the district would consider them. And I know that there has been FTE set aside. And I would ask just before the end of the school year that any decisions about supports for next year be made and communicated so that communities kind of leave for the summer knowing what sort of supports they'll have this, this next year, if that's possible. Or I don't know who you have to ask that to. Is that, at least, at least the supports for next year?
Sure. We welcome that conversation with the school community. We have a start in what they've synthesized together. Hopefully, they've seen, we've been responsive in the past on like the facilities concerns. But for this coming year, we want to get that as, as correct as possible. So we can set up a Lent-specific conversation pending the board's actions tonight.
Great. And then the, probably the most significantly impacted community and the, if you look at the 20 schools that are part of this process, the school with the highest percentage of low-income students is the Lent Neighborhood Program. And they also have a, at 55%, and they also have a 69% Black Indigenous and Students of Color, which is one of the highest of all the 20 schools. So at, at the end of, at the end of this day in this process, I know there were lots of conversations about trying to get all the pieces right and opening Harrison Park, which was a huge lift. And I, I don't want to underestimate how complicated this was because there's no other part in Portland, place in Portland where there's 12, you know, 12 special programs also collocated with neighborhood schools. But at the end of the day, it was kind of like the musical chairs and Lent kind of ended up, the Lent Neighborhood Program without the chair. And I, I think it, it wasn't a question of bad intent. It's just the, the impact they got left with the, you know, their, their community would be, would be bused to a nearby school across a number of busy streets and without having a conversation. And I think Carmen spoke really eloquently to the challenges of engaging the community. It's not just a one conversation and, and then we move on. And so I am going to propose an amendment that, and I've had a conversation with Superintendent Guerrero, that the Lent English Neighborhood Program have, that, that change be deferred for no more than a year so that there's time for the community to have a conversation with our educators about how do we best support a school community that really didn't have a voice in this process? And again, not with, not because of bad, bad intent, but just at the end of the day, they ended up in a place, I think, at the end of the process with something that they hadn't had a long conversation about how that could be, how this switch could be successful for their students. And, you know, Lent really has a strong feeling of like Lent United and that they're one community.
I just have two questions about that. One is, so we're already deferring this-
Actually, before you ask that question, do you want to go ahead and formally put that amendment on the table so we can have a conversation as a board?
Sure. And I don't, is the, what? What's the best way to do this? I have a revised amendment that-
So if you go ahead and make a motion and read that and you get a second, then we can-
Okay. And just, and just to be clear, this wouldn't impact any of the other changes. So all, all the other pieces would still move because there, Lent is a big enough school that the other changes could happen. And there'd be time for a community that needs to have a voice in this, can share their perspectives, you know, what they value about Lent. I mean, they very much feel that there are reasons why then neighborhood enrollment is low. And Carmen spoke to some of them. And how can we create this so this is a win for all of our students, including the Lent Neighborhood Program? So in the resolution, I would, General Counsel Large, should I just read out the changes or?
Yes, you make a motion to amend Resolution 6513 in the following ways and then reference the paragraph numbers in the recitals in the resolution that you're proposing to change.
Okay, here we go. I move for Resolution Number 6513 to modify it in the following ways. It's a long resolution. In I, that would be deleted. In the resolution language, this language would be added. The board also directs that the proposal to change the Neighborhood English Scholars Program at Lent be deferred for no more than a year. And the, this paragraph would be deleted. And Superintendent Resigny will work with, is directed to develop a transition plan for the Lent English Language Program to create a plan.
So one D would be deleted?
Yeah, sorry, I'm looking at something. I edited it over. But yes. So it would replace a new recital.
Do, do we, I know you have it in writing. Do we, do we have that writing just for people who visually can see? No?
I think you made other changes to paragraph one in the resolution. In the, you deleted in Lent and, in the thing you just sent me a few minutes ago. And the language about, I mean, and I think we should go print copies and distribute them, but I want to make sure we're printing the right-
And I, and I want to make sure that we're all clear because for all of these proposed changes, implementation is the 23, 24 school year. So are we talking about concretely delaying implementation? Or are we talking about just delaying our definitive decision on where the English language program, program would go?
It's delaying the definitive, the definitive decision because there hasn't been an opportunity for the Lent community to really be engaged about a very major change to their, to their school.
So I'd like to have a conversation about this. I just want to make sure. I think we need to have the motion and a second on the table. Can you read, well, well, staff are working to get it because I do think it's going to be important just before we vote on it to have it printed. But we can have a conversation. Can you just, can you read again? I think what I, I think I caught it, but just one more time for clarity.
It's very simple. In the recital-
Delete I.
The new C says, "The board also directs that the proposal to change the Neighborhood English Scholars Program at Lent be deferred for no more than a year."
Wait, the new D.
Is that one D you're talking about, Julia?
Two D. Two C.
Oh, okay. And then we also have one D that talks about the right to attend Marysville for English only programming.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Are we gonna, I mean, that's-
That's, that's out too.
Well, okay, so that would change as well. So I mean, I think it would be helpful. I get, I get the spirit of what you're proposing, but it would be nice to have-
I agree. And I've been, I've been struggling for a half an hour to make that happen.
But say that again, Director Lowry, because I, I would not support removing the clause that says they have the right to choose to attend Marysville starting next year if they, if that's their decision.
I mean, I think that's the conversation we have to have. What I, what I'm hearing from Director Bem Edwards is she'd like a year for the Lent community to have some more time to discuss this. And so that a decision on what happens with Lent English would be deferred a year. So we could, it could be made next year, but it wouldn't be implemented until the 20, well, I guess we're not talking about implementation. So it could be implemented in 23, 24, but we're going to give them a year to-
So I really want to have this conversation. So no, no, because you have a motion on the table. So we're going to need a second. And then in order to have, thank you. Thank you. So we've got a motion. We have a second. Now let's listen. And while we do this, staff are, great. Thank you very much.
My, my original question was about the size of the building because I know we've heard from some in the Bridger community that, that delay is not, it wouldn't delay. So there's enough room at Lent to take the Bridger students as well that are in DLI?
Lent is also adding two strands of pre-K this year, so may need more space. And so it, it could be really tight. We've, we've talked about it with the principal. It's doable. They would have to use every space, including some modular classrooms that they are not using as classrooms now.
So it would have some spatial impacts. Okay.
The amendment? So I went to the Lent Community Meeting and there were only two neighborhood families, two neighborhood parents there. And it was clear, like, for whatever reason, either the word hadn't got to them or, you know, people have things to do that, whether it's, you know, working or childcare. But the meeting started with, this is, this is to talk about the implementation of moving your program. And it really, it really wasn't a conversation about how can we better support your students or, or even listening to, I mean, I, listening to the Lent community about what they value about the community. And it, at least for me, what I heard was a pretty united community of wanting to keep the Lent community together. And, and then we had the meeting and, and then things just kept moving on. And I feel like, from my perspective, you know, if we're going to do something hard, like change or close a program or move a program, that the, and I've done it during my tenure eight times during my three terms on the board, having to close or merge programs. And every school community deserves an opportunity to talk about what's best for their students, the loss, you know, if, if you are going to move ahead with the change. And to also have a deep conversation about how their students are going to be supported if there is going to be a change. And that just hasn't happened yet. And so I think it's premature for us to be voting to just say we're going to be moving the program. And this is why I had asked Superintendent Guerrero whether that's something from a, from a staffing standpoint, we could accommodate. Because to me, I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do because I say, if we look at, if we're going to use our racial equity and social justice lens, Lent is the, the, the school in Outer Southeast and it should be Harrison Park that we should be looking at.
Let's take some questions.
I, I just want to say, like, I, the kids from Lent, the leadership of that Lent Leaders Group, the Lent Leopard Leaders, whatever it's called, has been amazing. The emails they have sent, the, the activities they have invited us to that I haven't been able to attend. But the students of that community have made their voices heard and have clearly articulated like a desire to have this conversation. And I just want to thank all of the adults that have helped create space for those students to be leaders.
The students created that space.
The students created the space. Thank you, Jackson. But those students, and I know you spent some time with them as well. I know there are some adults here that, I see you back there that are, is standing in solidarity with the work the students have done. But just to really appreciate that and the way they've spoken up. I think Director Bem Edwards, it's, it's so complex because I think this, how do we help people navigate the systems? And I would be in support of giving the Lent community some time. I love the signs that say co-create. I really, and I think that's what we're hearing people ask for is to co-create a future. I would be interested in saying, like, even if we delayed the decision for a year, we could implement that decision in the 23, 24 school year. And so is that your intention would be to delay the implementation a further year or just delay the decision, give us a year to talk through? And then at the decision point, then make a decision about implementation?
Well, I think for this to be authentic, we can't say that we've already made the decision and we're just going to talk about it. But if we're really going to co-create and look at what the-
That's, that's not what I asked, Julia.
Yeah, okay, sorry. I misunderstood.
I said, we're going to make a decision, like, we are not deciding what the decision is, but we are going to work with the Lent community to co-create a vision. Would you want to, is your intention with the amendment to delay the implementation of that to 24, 25? Or does, does it leave the possibility, the door open with the help, with the collaboration of the Lent community to implement in 23, 24?
Yeah, sorry, I misunderstood your, your question. So from talking to Superintendent Guerrero, who I think has consulted with Chief Reese, that there is at some, at some point where some decisions need to be made, but that there's, there's room for a conversation.
Great. I think that's right. There's a few caveats. I'm, I'm hearing that it wouldn't impact on all of the other sort of aspects or elements of this proposal. There, there's facility concerns you heard. We're also kickstarting some new early education classrooms. We want to make sure we can accommodate. And what, what would it mean if, if space has to be identified? There is staffing timelines. We want to be respectful of our contractual agreements if there's a decision to move in a different direction, that, that staff have the opportunity to participate in that process. So I just want us to be mindful, that's all. And so it doesn't, it may not take a year to really sort of have that meaningful conversation with the school community. We might come back sooner than that so we can take all of these variables into account.
Thank you. I'd be curious, hearing from Deputy Superintendent Hertz or any other staff in terms of this amendment tonight. Do you, do you have any staff concerns? Do you think it makes some sense after having been through this process for many, many months?
So I, we did have in the original resolution for people like our regional superintendents and our areas senior directors to work with the principals and the school communities, to bring the communities together that were transitioning to form, you know, communities even before students are beginning to move. And so we were leaving the work of the, our Office of School Performance Leaders to work with our school communities to find the best transition plan possible. So what I'm recognizing here is that when we make the decision not to move the Lent Neighborhood and we're leaving that pending decision, then we're going to have a Marysville that will be under-enrolled for quite some time. So just understanding that, making that- that making that decision impacts another, another school. And I would turn it to Director Brennan if there's other considerations that, that come to mind.
There is one that comes to mind. It's small and it's, it's certainly manageable. But in preparing for this change, we actually have to work with the city and change how buses access Marysville. And so the transportation team is trying to, like, accelerate that work and, and, and get it done. But it, it's one of those small factors that we do need lean time on. And so maybe we go ahead and do that anyway. That's devoting resources that may be fruitful in the future. And there are probably other smaller impacts. Not saying that they couldn't be managed, but that's what we'll have to start discussing right away. If indeed, if I understand correctly, you would, you would defer the future location for Lent neighborhood students and come back to that with a decision in the 23, 24 school year, ideally in time to support staffing, community building, transportation planning, and everything else that has to happen. If you defer the decision, we will have some small details to work out.
Great. And then.
Superintendent. Or we might need to defer the implementation to 24, 25. I mean, that's, I think we have to have that flexibility.
Not really on the table because we've got so many dominoes and a commitment to open Harrison Park. But Superintendent, I would, I think it was fair to ask of you to let us know, like, when do we need to make that decision by if we choose to defer this decision tonight? But I agree that this is, this is something that I've been thinking about. And it is a, unlike almost every other thread in this very, very complex process, this doesn't have a lot of impacts on the other parts of the proposal and other things that are happening if we, if we take a little more time. And I think one of the benefits of taking a little more time on this particular piece is that we can hear more from families about what kind of choices they would, they would be making, including incoming families with kindergarteners, not just next year, but the year after that. You know, would we have English speaking families who would opt into the DLI program that right now we're mostly speculating about all of that and about numbers? So I think it could give us a little more time to really know what that looks like and what our numbers are and.
So that's actually one of my questions. Would we allow, so I assume neighborhood kids would be able to go into the DLI program next year. Would they also be kindergarteners in the English language program at Lent? Would we keep dual tracking, including incoming kindergarteners?
So if there, if there's no action in place here in the resolution, we would have no reason to, we can tell them that the families, that it's being under discussion and no decision has been made. But there isn't something, you know, concrete to share with them that, what the plan is. So we just have to tell them it was under discussion.
So yes, so just to be clear, we would still have incoming kindergarteners in the English language program that might, if that decision is made, move or might stay there. One of the other, but then just to also be clear, neighborhood students would have right to access the DLI program?
Yes, kindergarten and actually first grade have been allowed to enter into DLI program.
Okay. One other question. I'm going to direct this to you. You may not be the best person to answer, but we, we, you mentioned tonight, sort of through this process, the uncertainty for the community. And we heard that from another people who testified tonight as well. It, it, it feels to me like this continues that uncertainty. I also know a lot of people here seem in support of this. And I'm going to assume they're somewhat representative of the community, but have we had that? I just want to make sure that we don't make a decision that all of a sudden, a lot of families who had already said, okay, this is going to happen and I just want to be done with it and we can make our decision, won't come back and say, wait a minute, now we have to have this conversation for a whole another year.
If those families exist, I haven't heard from them.
Okay.
I mean, the Lent community meeting, it was overwhelming from the Spanish DLI families and then subsequently the student activisms. It's been from both sides. And I want to thank Jackson for going out to meet with the Lent Leopard Leaders with me and from the teachers that they'd like to, they'd like to stay together. But really, that conversation never happened. And so I, I mean, if they, if they come together and they talk to the district leadership and they come to the conclusion, like, we're going to be much better if we just implement and we can move ahead, they could come back next week.
Were you able to follow up with Carmen? Because I know you and I had that conversation right before the meeting. If you had a chance to run it by her. And what was her response, Julia?
Do you want to? I, I did talk to some teachers as well. I mean, there's, there's a group of Lent teachers here and Carmen's here. I don't want to speak for you. If, if anybody wants to.
Were you able to touch base with her before the meeting about this amendment?
Well, right after we talked, yes.
Okay. And she was in support of the amendment?
Is that, I'm saying a nod, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And like I said, I talked to some teachers as well, but I, I have, overwhelmingly, again, I'm going to go back to, you know, I was part of boards when we had to make super difficult decisions about closing Wilcox and Edwards and Smith and Youngson and you go down the list. And a really important part of that conversation, and even some that were proposed that didn't happen, but really important part of the conversation is for the community to be able to share their perspectives about their communities before something happens to them. And that hasn't happened in this, in this instance. And so it, it is important for that conversation to have. And if they decide, you know, we collectively, this is, this is what we want to do. They can, you know, make their case as a collective community, but they, they haven't even had that opportunity to have that discussion. Just kind of, I say, not, not bad intent, but the impact is, at the end of the day, with everything moving around, it made sense, like, we got to move Lent. And again, if you look at the, the school community there, they're the ones that should be after Harrison Park at the center of our decision making.
Okay. Jackson, did you have any thoughts on the proposal?
Yeah, I think it's more just seeing the student advocacy and having multiple times to fight tooth and nail to get heard. It's kind of bittersweet for me to see because I'm excited to see students advocating. But I also, I want to see them being asked their input instead of having to contact the board to get their voices heard at this level. So I think I like that we're hearing from them now, but I also wish we had started this process from hearing from that community and hearing from those students.
Any other board discussion before we vote on the amendment and then move on to the proposal? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to go ahead and call the question on the amendment and that you, we now have in writing in front of us. And I'll just, again, try and summarize it. That defers the decision about moving the English language program at Lent for a year while we engage with the community.
No more than a year.
No more than a year while we engage the community. All those in favor of the amendment say yes?
Yes.
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 All those opposed? Any abstentions? Then the amendment passes six to zero with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Director Bem Edwards. Now we're going to move back to the amended SEGC proposal. And I'll just open it up. And I will just remind the board, I, I want to have enough conversation that people want to have. It is 8:05. We need to move on to the budget relatively soon. But let me open it up on the SEGC.
I, I want to start with something that's somewhat related to the conversation we just had, which is that one of the aspects of this proposal that I'm uncomfortable with is Kelly School just hanging out, out there without a lot of consideration or attention or without any, any changes proposed in this process. And I'm not necessarily saying that we should open that back up as we reconsider the Lent English language issues in the next go around. But it is a school that is adjacent, that is at less than half of its building capacity with about half of its students coming in from other districts and losing enrollment. So it's not a sustainable situation for their English language, you know, kids in their neighborhood program. And I, I'm not, I would tell, say that I'm just not sufficiently convinced as to why it wasn't more considered and integrated into this process. So if that can be part of a continuing conversation about the children in the neighborhood program at Lent, which is just adjacent, then perhaps we can address two, two challenges at the same time. And this is something we've also talked about a long time on a, on a different level in terms of coordinating with our adjacent districts who have a lot of students in the Russian DLI program at Kelly, which is now the majority of the students in that program and about half the students in that school. So I would really like to see us take a look at that. And then, oh, you know, another, another issue that, that wasn't addressed and, and believe me, I think it was an incredible challenge to narrow this scope to a place where we could arrive at a proposal like this that basically makes the puzzle pieces fit. The, the bigger the scope, the more puzzle pieces there are, the harder it is. But, you know, we didn't address anything in terms of our high school feeder patterns, which we know need a ton of work. We have, we have great disparities in enrollment between our high schools, which really leads to great inequities and perpetuates great inequities. So we need to address that. But the way that it is related directly to this process is we have some middle schools with split feeder patterns. And sometimes I've been through a boundary process where it was just literally unavoidable based on geography and transportation routes. And sometimes that is the case, but it's certainly not ideal. So the situation that we have with the Creston students going to Hospford, who will then go to Cleveland when the rest of, or, yeah, who will go to Franklin when the rest of their Hospford cohort goes to Cleveland, that's really tough. And you have the same situation with Whitman and Lane.
And some of the Lewis students that are going to go to Lane will now also go to Cleveland.
Yeah.
And Woodstock going to Harrison Park and then back to Cleveland.
So I'm not suggesting that we muddy the water in this, in this moment, but we do have a phase two coming down the pipeline and phase three.
It's somebody else's turn.
Yeah. And so those, not only do we need to consider the high schools, but we need to look at our split feeder patterns from our middle schools because that's just, that's a hard situation for kids. And to the extent that it's ever avoidable, we want to do what we can. I guess that's probably all I really need to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Constan. Other comments on the SEGC proposal in front of us?
Yeah.
Director Bem Edwards? Oh, sorry, Student Representative Weinberg?
It was just going to be in continuation with that. I was in an advisory group for social emotional learning standards on Monday. And the topic of conversation was around the need to build relationships in your school community and have that consistent K through 12 to have emotional competency. Because once we have that, everything else falls into place. So our graduation rates will increase. Our, I'm blanking on all the other research that was presented, but all of these indicators that we see for student achievement and success increase. And when we are increasing the number of split feeder patterns from just Whitman to Lane and then separating there to different schools, we're adding Woodstock DLI, we're adding Woodstock to Lane, so we're adding another split feeder pattern there and the Creston one, which I actually wasn't aware of. So thank you for bringing that one up. We talked in 2020 about how undesirable having split feeder patterns are. And then seeing a proposal come back that increases instead of tries to decrease that is tough for me to see.
I just want to point out that that research, Jackson, about like, school transition always sets students back and, and those relationships are so vital. Some of that was the impetus behind the creation of the Kates in the first place was to try, you know, it was an experiment to try to find some stability and some empowerment for students. And one of the things we then discovered was that students weren't able to have a robust academic experience. There wasn't the sort of diverse community being built. And so that's one of those things of weighing, how do you do both well? And I think, I think, you know, I've talked to Deputy Hertz about this. And, and the plan is with the high school feeder patterns to correct some of these things. But it's, it's sort of what, if we opened up the can of worms of high school with this change, then that would bring so many other puzzle pieces into play. And so it's trying to do things in a sequential manner, but it's really messy. And, and these are real kids that'll be affected. And I think that's part of why there's extra resources. I know that there's, it looked like 10 FTE in this proposal that will help with some of that stability, bringing some stability in relationship during limits of change.
Director Bem Edwards, did you have comments?
Can I, to what I had to say, one thing I forgot to say, which is that just, I, I really support working with the Lent English, the Lent neighborhood community this year to talk about what's best there. But I also don't want to lose sight. We haven't explicitly talked about the goal that we prioritized in this process of not having co-located programs and of really looking at the academic needs of our English language learners. And you know, we have one test case, which is Rigler now. And I think by most or all accounts, you know, they've had a very successful school year in terms of stable, stabilizing that community and student achievement is improving. And so this was something that we, we set out to do. And you can't, you can't just create that out of thin air without also having, you know, some, some repercussions. But I didn't want to lose sight of that.
Thank you. Director Bem Edwards, and I think we can then probably move on to a vote.
Yeah, I guess as somebody who participated in all the meetings, but in fairness, I'm not a parent right now in any of those schools. So I didn't feel the sort of the daily anxiety, the stress, or how is this going to, it's going to be good for my student? How's it, how's it going to impact them? So I guess I would just caution that before we launch on more things happening in outer south, mid to outer southeast, that like, let's, let's implement these well. That's really important because it will build trust and credibility in the community for the work ahead. But there, but between the pandemic, the Southeast Guiding Coalition, all the changes, and the, you know, cuts in staff, the community is really fragile right now. And I, I think there's some really positive things that are coming out of this. But let's, let's move ahead and implement well and take care of our, our kids before we start something additional new. And I'm sorry, I have one last thing, is there was a recommendation from the Southeast Guiding Coalition just about process. And, you know, this was complicated by COVID, the complexity of the school communities in mid to outer southeast. But I really, they recommended kind of a debrief session on the process. And I think that's really important. You know, as a learning institution, we can always do things better and learn from that. And I really hope we aren't too tired to do that last debrief because I think it will serve us well for the, especially on the implementation.
And before we move on to our budget conversation, I just want to make it clear to the community that the superintendent is proposing in the budget 10 FTE to support schools that are impacted in this proposal. And it remains to be seen exactly what those positions are, whether they're direct teaching positions and to help with the planning and engagement process as well. So.
Thank you. The board will now vote on Resolution 3513, Southeast Enrollment and Program Balancing Phase Two. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. And are there any abstentions? Resolution 6513 is approved by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
I've struggled with this vote all day. I'm going to say a hesitant yes, just because I'm very concerned with the, we have so many yes ands in this proposal that I think we are going to be missing out on some of those ands. And those ands are what are going to support our students in this process. And I also, I can't agree with the split feeder pattern. And I hope that gets fixed in the next phase, but it's doing a disservice to all these students that are going to be experiencing this for at least the next two years, probably. So, yeah. So yes, but with hesitation, I guess.
Thank you. I have a, I know we've got a lot of people here for budget. I have a request to take a five or three. We're going to take a very quick three-minute break and we'll be back to start the budget conversation. Our budget conversation, I believe we have a quorum. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
That was way longer than three minutes.
Well, that's why I'm bringing us back. So anyway, thank you, everyone, for that quick break. We are going to move on to the budget conversation. So I am now recessing the board from its regular meeting and reconvening as the Budget Committee. The board will now discuss and vote to approve the proposed 2022-23 budget and the imposition of property taxes. Before we begin our discussion, Superintendent Guerrero and our CFO will be reviewing a few important highlights of the recommended budget, clarifying some information and highlighting what the budget is focused on, and, and we'll also get a little bit more detail on the proposal for using the additional $9 million in net carryover. The district recently learned it would have, following the state's reconciliation of its school funds that were shared at last week's budget work session. Superintendent Guerrero?
Can I, before that, could you just take a moment and explain once again for all of us the difference between we're, what we're voting on tonight and what will happen, and the difference between the Budget Committee voting and the Board voting?
Yeah, Director Lowry.
Because I think that's always really helpful because it's complicated.
Yeah, and so just as a reminder, under, under, well, under Oregon law, there's, there's three distinct stages to the budget process. The, the, the budget officer, which in our case is the superintendent, proposes a budget to, to, to the, to the, to the Budget Committee. The Board, in our case, serves as the Budget Committee, and it's at this, we are the Budget Committee, the same, right? So hear me out, same thing, they're one and the same. But for this stage of the process, we are the Budget Committee, and we approve the budget tonight. The budget then goes to the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission, which will have 21 days to review it and make its own recommendations. It will then come back to the Board for approval. So tonight, the Board is the Budget Committee, I'm sorry, for adoption. Tonight, the Board approves the budget as the Budget Committee, and in three weeks, we adopt the budget as the Board. So, and this is, we did not make this process up. The state of Oregon made this process up for us, and we are abiding by that.
And what potential changes can happen between adoption and approval? Because I think that's always confusing, too.
So at this point, and, and we're going to have a robust conversation tonight about any potential amendments. After it comes back, the Board can again amend the budget. The only restriction is we can't increase any fund by more than 25%. 10%.
10, yeah.
10%. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that would be the restriction at the adopted phase of the budget, so.
Can we, as we, yeah, go ahead. Can we decrease by any amount?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I'll, I'll chime in from a process perspective because the Budget Committee, you all are the same. Hopefully, like, all of that gets straightened out so that when, by the time we get to adopt it, you already had a conversation amongst yourselves about.
And then I know from, I know from during COVID that we actually did some budget amendments because things were very different, and so we needed to move some funds around. So that also, in the, once we've approved and adopted a budget, we can make budget amendments during the course of a year when, if things happen.
Yeah. And, and that is the way also, if we wanted to increase the adopted budget by more than 10%, you can come back right after July 1 and, and do a budget amendment if need be.
I just think that's, it's a very complicated, weird budget process, and so that's always just instructive for me, and I, and I hope for folks following along at home, this, this wonky Oregon law.
Yeah. So thank you for that. And tonight, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Guerrero, but we are going to have, I, we need to have a robust conversation about the budget. I do hope we can have an efficient conversation about the budget. So being thinking, if you have ideas, or if you have any proposals or changes or areas you want to focus on, let's just make sure we get those on the table upfront, and then we can go through a process if there are any amendments to the budget, and then we will approve it and move on. Superintendent Guerrero?
Good evening again. We'll, we'll keep it to reviewing some highlights. We've shared a great deal of detail with directors already. But just to take us back, when I first presented our 2022-23 budget to you about a month ago, I began by acknowledging the important role our public schools play in our community, particularly now. The budget you are considering tonight focuses on emerging out of this global pandemic with a deeper, more complete school experience for our students. That's our goal. As superintendent, I'm first and foremost an educator. With those over 30 years in the classroom, leading schools, operating in large urban districts, I take seriously my charge for ensuring all 43,000 students in PPS get what they need to thrive in school and beyond within our means. Coming out of this pandemic in a very challenging school year, we know our students need extended learning opportunities that go beyond the traditional academic school calendar. We know they benefit from supportive adults who can address their growing mental and behavioral health needs. We know that they need more rich learning opportunities that can strengthen, motivate, bring joy to their learning. We know that they need more adults who care and hold a high set of expectations for their individual success. We've all felt the consequences of the last year or two, and we've been listening. We hear the needs. Our recommended budget tonight considers these needs. It makes thoughtful compromises. It aims to promote more joyful, more powerful learning experiences for our students' next school year. Objectives for tonight. First, we'll review just a few important highlights of our approximately 1.89 billion recommended budget. We'll take the opportunity to clarify some misinformation and refocus on what this budget truly tries to accomplish, what it contains. Second, as a follow-up to last week's meeting, we'll share our best thinking about how to maximize the $9 million in carryover dollars. We spoke to the Board about this last week, to further support our community's priorities. And of course, very importantly, have directors consider and vote tonight to approve the 2022-23 budget and tax rates. And joining me tonight in this quick presentation will be our CFO, our CFO, Alberto Delgado. So our budget should serve as a statement of our values and our priorities. So I want to be really clear. Next year's budget directs all available dollars to address student unfinished learning and prioritizes direct services and supports to students. It provides more opportunities to strengthen, enrich, and bring joy to the student learning experience. Our budget provides more adults who can support the growing behavioral and mental health needs of our students. It elevates opportunities for staff to grow as professional educators, and it makes progress to improve the supportive conditions within our schools, especially in light of this challenging school year. Of course, for, to make our guiding priorities impactful, we remain focused on narrowing gaps that continue to limit opportunities for students of color, in particular, to succeed in our schools. As a result, we are resourcing staffing schools more equitably. We are putting more resources in schools with higher needs. We are spending more dollars per student at schools in underserved communities. Over the last month, there's been a distortion of what our recommended budget represents. Despite the pressures of declining student enrollment and higher costs to operate, we've made thoughtful decisions to direct the bulk of all of our available resources to serve the holistic needs of our students. So what are the facts? PPS is expecting an enrollment decline of about 3,400 students. That's about 8% of our total enrollment. That means that in the immediate, we will see a slight increase in per-student funding from the state school funding, state school fund. While we're seeing a slight increase in per-student funding, revenue is not keeping pace with the costs to operate schools. This is driven primarily by increasing salary and benefit costs. That is why we've proposed using $49 million, or half of our rather healthy fund balance, of which we've built up over the last few years. We're grateful to the Board for your support in lowering the fund balance and allowing us to make more direct investments to students and schools at this time. I think these points are very important. I've heard a lot of rhetoric that PPS is flush with dollars. What that omits, however, is the cost to operate schools also continue to grow. And what that omits is much of these new dollars are one-time, which means that when these funds run out, they will not be replaced. And what is often left out of the conversation is that this budget does use all available resources to limit the overall reduction of school staff for the coming year. It increases direct services to students, including more mental and behavioral health supports. It adds more learning opportunities, including a robust summer program. And we are doing this through an equity lens, meaning that our schools with higher needs are staffed more generously. This means that class sizes in those schools are more optimal. This means that the adult-to-student ratios are much lower because these schools have more support staff. This means that overall, we are spending more dollars per student in schools classified as CSI, TSI, and Title I. And before I turn it over to our CFO, I want to emphasize three points. One, we're making significant investments that retain a higher level of teacher FTE across the system. While we've reduced positions by less than 3%, no classroom educator nor any other licensed educator is experiencing a layoff. And despite a reduction in positions, we've used one-time dollars to continue to lower class sizes, as evidenced by our overall reduction of class size maximums. Two, we are supporting students, focused on delivering services that support the needs of the whole child. In fact, our budget reflects that schools host an array of professionals, including social workers, counselors, school principals, added assistant principals, et cetera. And each of these educators directly support the needs of our students. They augment what happens in the classrooms and help enrich the school environment and its conditions. Three, we're aggressively using one-time dollars to support student needs. Many of the investments we'll make for next year are supported by one-time dollars. It's important to be upfront and transparent with our community that barring any new sources of significant revenue, next year's budget conversation will be much different. I'm going to turn it over to our CFO to walk you through further budget details and clarify a few additional points this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Guerrero. As a reminder, the total budget consists of five major funds, with the general fund and the special revenue funds being key to supporting our district operations. The following slide contains our updated budget numbers, when we go from our proposed budget, which was about a month ago, April 26, to what we'd be recommending to the Budget Committee to approve. The biggest updates are attributed to the general fund and special revenue fund. The general fund increased by about $9 million to $804 million due to our updated financial forecasts. The special revenue fund, which is comprised of several restrictive programs, increased by about $6 million to account for the anticipated HB4030 funding. And I should note that we are in the process of applying for the HB4030 funds. There's no proposed plan, but we are in the process of developing one. The special revenue fund now totals approximately $311 million. All of these finds combined make up the total of about 1.89 billion, make the total of our 1.89 million, billion-dollar budget. Next slide. Also, if you recall at our April 26 presentation, we shared a high-level overview of our general fund team's breakdown by service. Because the term central office can be misleadingly simple. Categorizing our teams from the perspective of how they support our staff and students helps to highlight how they contribute to our district. These percents take in, take into account both the general fund and the special revenue funds, which include funds like SIA, Measure 98, ESER, and Title Funds. Because the term central office can be misleadingly simple, it assumes a fixed location or a specific job type. So for additional clarity, we offer a more dynamic view summarized in four categories to help clarify and reaffirm the investment in people closest to our students. Next slide. And directors, you saw a version of this slide last week. However, the primary difference is that it now contemplates spending an additional $9 million, which takes our projected beginning fund balance of $100 million down to approximately $51 million. We're still at the six.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
So the nine, the $9 million, the reconciliation, the, after the reconciliation, we got 12, and the last meeting, it went from 12 to nine. It was described as offset. What specifically?
The $3 million offset?
Right.
Yeah. So, sorry. If you want to finish your question, I was ready to jump in.
You're ready for this one. Yeah, because I sent it before the meeting, and so, it's my understanding is from the state, they sent us $12 million, and then, but what we had to utilize then was just nine. And so the offset is, went to what?
So from our expenditure side, so right, we're like at the end of the day, and I know you're very well aware of this, but just for the general conversation topic, right, we have our revenues. So revenues come in, there's a reconciliation that occurred, and hey, here's your $12 million. Other side of the equation, we have expenses. So every quarter, we forecast out to where we'll be June 30. And based on our expense rate, we made an adjustment, we were spending at about $3 million more than where we were the previous quarter. So within our budget, but just spending a little faster than what we were anticipating. And when we say spending, this is everything from supplies to additional trips, field trips, or whatever the case may be. It's just like where we were at the end of December compared to where we were at the end of March, we're like, oh, spending's picked up. So we're now anticipating additional $3 million. So that's where that nets out.
Yeah, if I could just add an additional question. And I did, I did go in for whatever teacher was, that recommended I have the small group instruction with the Deputy Superintendent Hertz on the ending fund balance. I did do that. But the question I have then is, originally, when we got the budget, there was seven millions in savings, and part of it was described as like either unfilled positions or like decisions not to do things. Is the, the $3 million, is that actually, was that part of the savings, or was there actually 10 million in savings and, or, I'm just trying to figure if that, if we now have fewer savings that were anticipated because more money was spent?
No, because those savings, we like carved, we swept them. We swept them. So this is on top of that, based on our trend rate, that's the new data point.
So the, the $7 million had already been saved, and then you had the budget sitting there, and then there was an additional $3 million of spend, which means that can't go into the beginning fund balance?
Correct. Yes, yeah. And, and we'll, and we continue to monitor. It's, 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 as the year, as the months progress, we have some trend data to look back to be able to provide educated guesses, but they are our estimates at this point in time.
So the $3 million is an overspend of what we expected this quarter, basically?
At this point, yes.
And do you know what that overspend, like what areas that was in?
And it was spread across, so from supplies to a variety of other expenditures. So it wasn't necessarily like one specific transaction.
Okay.
Technology.
That's what the superintendent just said, was technology was a big one.
That's another area. Yep.
Superintendent, you did say something at the end of your presentation, and you said that next year's budget conversation will be different than this one. And I, my, my little heart was like, oh, we won't have any cuts and it'll be lovely. But I think what you were trying to say is that next year's budget conversation will actually be more painful than this one because we won't have that ESER money. And so some of the things we're doing this year won't be around next year, and so we'll be back here with more signs.
Hold that thought. A budget is always a matter of choices and trade-offs. My last slide is going to speak to this question.
And the, the last thing I'll add to this slide is that using that $49 million, it's using one-time funds. So it is using one-time funds to balance our budget for next year. Next slide, please. In overall, the, the recommended budget for approval still prioritizes over more than $133 million to make next year a more powerful learning experience for every PPS students, educator, and staff. So with this in mind, I will turn it back to Superintendent Guerrero.
Thanks, Alberto. Well, as I've shared with directors from the beginning, you know the development of our budget is always iterative, especially as we receive updated revenue projections. We just saw that recently, and we fine-tune cost estimates. So for example, last week, we came to you, our ending fund balance was revised to be $9 million more than, than we projected. And as we discussed last week, we heard support to earmark those dollars to support, further support students in school communities. And in thinking about how to best use these dollars and the input we've received, it was important to hear from you and our community, what, what is the top priorities? We heard a, a number of these priorities to include the need to support the increasing number of students slated to receive special education services next year. We heard a desire to further improve adult-to-student ratios. There's an expectation to support Southeast Portland schools impacted by the changes we just discussed, resulting from enrollment and program balancing. resulting from enrollment and program balancing. Uh, there was a desire to establish a centralized student activities fund to support student trip experiences more equitably. So in response, here's our attempt to thoughtfully distribute nine million dollars across an array of these same priorities. Uh, in your board material, you have a lot more details about each of these line items, but I want to highlight sort of the top, the top ones. As you can see, uh, we've updated numbers. We expect to fully restore eighteen FTE positions in special education to serve the growing need there. That's eighteen FTE positions restored to special education. Hearing directly from our union partners and members of our community, we've allocated twelve additional positions. That's a combination of counselors, social workers, mental health professionals, for example, to support high-need schools such as Title One schools and schools in need of targeted or comprehensive improvement. In total, these additional seventy-four positions will continue our effort to increase learning opportunities for students, grow access to mental behavioral health and wraparound professionals, and continue to make progress on our community's top priorities. And these nine million are just a fraction of the more than a hundred and thirty-three million that are going directly to support student success. I started off my opening remarks by acknowledging that our budget serves as a statement of our values and priorities. So this in front of you is our statement of our values and priorities. Thirty-seven and a half million to address unfinished learning. Thirty-five million to increase learning opportunities for students. Seventeen million to provide more high-quality emotional, mental health and wraparound supports. Sixteen million to create more time for professional educators to plan, collaborate, and prepare. And more than thirteen million dollars to make meaningful progress on our community's top priorities. All of these dollars, all a hundred and thirty-three million are again going directly to support student success. Why aren't we clapping? So, we're, we're clear on what students need now. Our students need rigorous and engaging instruction. Our students need extended learning opportunities. They need access to additional adults who can support and address their behavioral and mental health needs. And they need us to all come together to demonstrate that we care, that we hold high expectations for their individual success. Our twenty-two, twenty-three budget balances all of these needs to strengthen the service delivery to our students. It makes deep investments now to directly support students and staff emerging from this pandemic. It balances the use of one-time dollars to directly support students' learning and strengthen the capacity of our educators across the school system. It leverages all available resources towards students now. I also want to recognize the importance of looking ahead and thinking about the very likely scenario we will be facing next year. We agree with everyone here that we must make all available resources available to students, which we are doing now. And we should continue to note, as our directors have pointed out in earlier conversations, that next year's budget conversation will require difficult trade-offs that could create significant disruptions next year when we don't have access to large amounts of one-time money. We, of course, must continue to advocate for the full funding of Oregon's public schools together, including the full funding of Oregon's quality education model. It'll take all of us together to ensure we have the stable and elevated level of investment necessary to serve our students. So I'll stop there with our highlights. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent. We're going to do a couple of things here before we get into board conversation. Uh, the Portland Association of Teachers has asked for some time tonight on the board agenda. And so I'd like to invite PAT Vice President Gwen Sullivan and President-elect Angela Bonilla to provide a few comments. And then, um, I, I'll ask the board again. We do have three people signed up for testimony. Would we like to hear them at the beginning of our conversation? Yes, I would agree with that. So please, uh, welcome.
Hello. Nice to see you all. Thanks for allowing us to speak tonight. I'm Gwen Sullivan, Vice President of Portland Association of Teachers, sitting with my comrade Angela Bonilla, our President-elect. Um, Board Directors and Student Weinberg Director, pleasure to see you. Uh, and Superintendent Guerrero, uh, pleasure. Um, tonight, I'm going to try to make sure that I stay on, on target um, to, to really talk about, number one, um, the importance of what we care about as educators and, um, you know, how we're moving through this budget. So I'll start by saying it's really important to educators that we want a school district that we can be really proud of. And we want a school district that, um, we can happily encourage folks to work here. That they, it's a great district. We want them to be here. And we want our students to actually see themselves as future educators working in this district. And I do think you all want some of the same things. Um, so knowing this, I'll start by saying thank you uh, for adding back some of the, the FTE cuts. We started off with a lot more, and, um, we have some of the cuts to elementary. Um, we saw some of those come back. Um, we also saw, um, even tonight, the special education cuts being restored uh, or mostly restored. Um, and that, as you talked about tonight, the ten FTE for the enrollment balancing, that's a positive. Um, and some more FTE for mental health supports, uh, in our middle schools. So thank you, um, to, you know, restoring some of the cuts. And, um, our schools need a lot more. And so when we're looking at prioritizing, we really want to look at all the areas in the budget where we can make sure we're making a huge different, difference for the kids who need it most. And, um, so with that, I, I will start by saying some of the greatest needs, and you guys have heard it, um, are our middle schools. Um, there was a segment last night about it, and I just think that this is an area that we definitely need to have more supports for our middle school. Um, our, our kids definitely need a lot more. We need, I know that we brought in, um, middle school teachers. We did a survey. And, I mean, everybody said that they would like a forward-facing RJ person, a restorative justice person in the schools to work on all of the huge issues that are happening. Um, the other thing, they need more time. Everybody, you know, definitely needs more time. And later tonight, you're going to hear from, um, some middle school educators that came together and really, in a short amount of time, got a lot of feedback from their colleagues in other areas. So, um, you know, moving forward, um, we really want to make sure that we address uh, huge issues around their need for safety, um, for stability. As we talked about, um, the importance of relationships, the stability is really important, and the school-based supports, that it's at the school, that it's not someone coming in for a day or two. So, um, with that, I will, um, turn it over to Angela.
Thanks Gwen. Hi. Um, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about what I've noticed, um, in the kind of dance we've been doing as a district, um, with our educators and parents and students and this board around the budget. Um, so in February, we had that, we heard that initial plan to cut a hundred and eighty positions. And, um, and then the proposal we saw on March ninth brought that down to a hundred and ten middle and elementary school positions. And I saw a lot of community feedback coming back and pressuring y'all, and, um, you made the changes. You added student-facing positions. So again, thank you. And then on May fourth, we learned that there were several positions that were maintained, but, um, we were still going to have ninety-nine less adults in the building with students under the proposal. And that's also when we learned that when the school board asked those tough questions, the majority of the six point seven million reported as savings from central office was unfilled positions. Um, and the majority of those positions, uh, were in special ed positions and custodial positions. Elizabeth and I came here and spoke. Educators and their students spoke, parents spoke. And PPS once again found the money to use to maintain multiple student-facing positions. Again, thank you. I appreciate the responsiveness of this body. I also want to make sure that I pause for a second to clarify something about our last presentation. Um, I was reading through the frequently asked questions. Thank you for all the board materials and for putting that stuff up. Um, and I know that there was a question that stated we misrepresented, um, data around administrators. And so that data that we used came from PPS's own budget books. Um, and then when we want to talk about positions in central office, that is a very vague term. And so I want to make sure to clarify that. We had a Freedom of Information Act request to ask for the, um, numbers of central office staff that are making, or excuse me, PPS staff that are making over a hundred and ten thousand dollars, um, which would be primarily administration. When we remove student-facing, building-based administrators, the data shows that the number of academic program administrators, academic program associates, assistant administrators of special programs, assistant directors of academic programs have increased from thirty-nine positions in sixteen seventeen to fifty-seven positions in twenty-one, twenty-two. So I understand that the table you saw earlier was talking about different positions, and it wasn't as clearly parsed out, so I wanted to make sure to give that information, um, specifically about positions that are not student-facing. Um, but I do want to continue to, you know, make sure that we are mirroring that feedback response, right? We heard, I saw it, I heard it, want to make sure to give you that data um, because we know that we're not here to intentionally mislead the public. We're here to serve our kids. We're here to do the best by, by our students and our communities. Um, so I also want to make sure to applaud our community for coming out in force and, and really making sure that we all hear the changes they want to be, they want made. So most recently, we heard about the twelve million due to the May state school adjustment that happens every year. And we already saw that three million of it has been spent. Um, and what I've noticed is that every time there are questions and concerns, PPS is able to find a way to make, to find a way to prioritize what the community prioritizes with their money. And this proves to me what, uh, you know, we all know to be true, that priorities shift when communities speak up. So thank you for being that responsive board. And we're also listening to your concerns and trying to find a way forward. Our position is this, we don't need to spend more, we need to spend differently. We don't need to use one-time funds or tap into reserves to give students what they deserve. Every dollar of that twelve million we found in those, you know, district couch cushions, wherever they came from, um, should directly go to support students. And I also know that through HB forty thirty, the district is poised to receive an additional five point eight million dollars from the state. Um, and this funding was made available through a grant during the short session, short session. Um, when we heard about it at PAT, we made sure to call, uh, PPS's labor relations, uh, folks and, and HR so that we could remind them to apply for that and make sure that we get those funds. Because we are all here for the same thing. We want our kids to have the best experience they can in their schools. Um, and that appropriation was added by the state in order to recruit and retain educators and support personnel. And so in those budget materials, I saw that we are going to be pulling some money from the general fund in order to give bonuses to our paraprofessionals, which they rightly deserve, and then some. But we also have this forty thirty money, which is one-time. And so this is another example of, of thinking about how we can be creative with the funds we have in front of us in order to ensure that we're providing the best support for our students on the ground in their buildings. And so I, I, you know, I think we are sharing, we share that opportunity with PPS because we know that collaboration is not just sharing these empty platitudes. It's listening to the concerns we all bring and believing each other. You know, believing that when there, even though there are more, um, funds available, there is also more spending. We believe that. We hear you. And we are also asking that y'all believe us when we say that our students have specific needs and we're on the ground knowing what those needs are and are asking you for those specific things. And so we have to have that mutual belief and trust in order to move forward together. So what we are asking here is that the board pass an amended budget that ensures that that adjustment goes to school-based, student-facing positions, um, for our middle schools. And doing that by taking the following steps. So the first is to amend the budget to increase staff and hold class sizes of no more than thirty in our TSI and Title Middle Schools. Specifically, our TSI and Title Middle Schools. Those are the middle schools we've heard having the disproportionate impact of the pandemic. That way, staff can provide more opportunities for students to connect with each other during those, you know, lunch periods where you'll hold affinity groups. The more staff that are available to hold those groups, the more staff that are available to do duty at lunch and ensure kids are safe. Um, we also want the board to amend the budget to provide a full-time FTE, building-based restorative justice coordinator at every middle school. Um, and making sure to prioritize that FTE for our Title and TSI middle schools. And these positions need to be staffed by, um, you know, trained restorative justice coordinators, certified counselors, or social workers, or teachers. And these positions will ensure that we're having that preventative approach. We're building that community within our schools. Because what we're hearing, um, is that the schools that are having the highest need are getting folks who kind of fly by, support in the moment of crisis, and then have to go back to their regular jobs, which is doing something else. They're supporting the other buildings that are also in crisis. And so that is why we're asking for a specific allocation of FTE for restorative justice coordinators. Being building in site-based, those RJ coordinators will be able to provide students with the caring and consistent adults they need. When I started working in education, I worked with infants and toddlers and, um, yeah, early childhood. And, um, one of the things I learned about adverse childhood experiences is that the biggest ways to counter those adverse childhood experiences is by having one consistent, caring, adult relationship. As an educator, I went into the classroom and decided that I will be that one consistent, caring relationship for every one of my students every year. I know that our educators are thinking very similarly. They want to be that person for their kids. And if we can provide folks to, to give those opportunities, we will ensure that they can, we can have as many caring, consistent relationships for our students in our middle schools as possible. Um, I think it's really important to remember, Renee Anderson said in her presentation, um, from the CRBC report, that there's a hole in the roof, and we're going to lose the house if we don't put our resources into fixing it. We need these site-based RJ coordinators. We need smaller class sizes in our middle schools, specifically, especially our TSI and Title Schools. We know that we can only find a solution to these problems if we believe each other's truths, if we move forward together, if we decide to prioritize this very important, specific time in our students' lives, that early adolescence where they need intensive instruction around how to build community, how to solve problems, how to empathize, and how to repair harm that has been caused. Um, so thank you for your time and for listening.
Ms. Bonilla?
Yes. Before you go, I have a clarifying question. So I think I heard you suggest that, um, the, in our current conversation, which is a mutual conversation between the district and PAT around that HB thirty forty money, um, we're, we're figuring out what our proposal is in terms of what we want to use those funds for. What I think I heard you suggest is the opportunity to take the amount of money that is proposed in this budget for the retention bonuses for our paraprofessionals and include that in the proposal for those earmarked dollars under thirty forty, which would then, um, free up one point five addition, one point five million additional, uh, dollars, um, in this budget. One point, one point two. Thanks, Director Lowry.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. That's what you were suggesting, and BTW, it's a great idea.
My understanding is we don't, we actually haven't received those funds yet, so we're applying for them. And we make, I mean, it's conceivable we could not get them, right?
Highly unlikely that we, that we not get it.
Highly unlikely.
It's not a competitive grant. I think what the expectation in the short timeline is that we collaborate with our labor partners. And look, I fully support the idea of doing what we can to support our middle grades. And we want to take care of our PFSP partners, too. So, you know, I think we're all hearing the suggestion here, sort of the next cushion to look under.
And I know that the, one of the things that was on the list of priorities we had was our labor costs, right? And making sure, you know, we had our friends in purple here tonight from SEIU and really being intentional about, we do want to, we know this has been a hellish year for a lot of people, and we do want to support our labor partners. And so this is another hopeful resource we can do to do that, which is not one of the items we've added except for that para-ed bonus.
Great. So thank you so much for your testimony. And I hope you stick around in case we have additional questions for you.
Oh, yeah.
As we go through tonight. I think at this point, Kara, if we can invite up the people's testimony, and then we'll go back to board. And I would just ask board members again, if you've got specific proposals, either for amendments or just clarifying questions of staff, let's just make sure we can put those at the front right after we hear from testimony. So, Director Ben Edwards?
Well, I was just going to ask something because I thought I asked this question in the budget questions because there was a request for restorative justice coordinators at each school. And I thought the answer back was, I'm pretty sure that, was that they're actually already in there?
They're not, there's the proposal has?
Okay, I'm going to actually, that's a great clarifying question, and staff are now ready to answer it after we hear from testimony.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
Allison Ellsworth?
Welcome.
Thanks. Hello, my name is Allison Ellsworth, E-L-L-S-W-O-R-T-H. I teach students math at Mount Taper Middle School, where I'm also a PAT rep, and I'm the parent of a future middle schooler who is currently at Llewellyn Elementary School. I'd like to begin by asking each of you to bring yourself back to your own middle school time. Remember being 12, or 13, or 14. Probably you felt awkward and out of place a lot of time, along with a deep need to figure out where your place was. You probably surprised yourself, and likely the adults in your life, by making extremely ill-advised decisions and then instantly regretting them. You probably also surprised yourself by making positive choices based on newly but deeply held beliefs. You were in constant state of trying to figure out who you were and who you wanted to be. If you were lucky, you were surrounded by caring adults who had deep empathy for your struggles, who knew how and when to set boundaries to keep you and your peers safe. If you were lucky, you were surrounded by peers who were making similar mistakes to your own, but who are also held in a safe community to grow and find themselves. Now I ask you to put yourself in the shoes of our current middle schoolers. They were in the middle of fourth, or fifth, or sixth grade when the COVID pandemic started. They have spent the time that you spent trying out your fluid identities and community on their own, at home. Many losing family and community members, their lives upended by the loss of most or all of the structures upon which they depended. This fall, they returned to school lacking so many of the skills that our students usually come with, both academic and social. And the result has been a huge increase in violent and emotionally dysregulated behavior by students across the city, a response to the trauma that they have experienced. Lastly, I ask you to put yourself in the shoes of our current middle school teachers. We are in our jobs because we love supporting students as they become themselves. But this year, so many of us are considering leaving our profession. We still love our students and our colleagues and our communities. But as I talk to my colleagues across all of our middle schools, I hear that we do not feel supported by our district. We lack the time to do the restorative work and relationship building that our students need. We lack the staff at our schools to support our students fully, or when we have the staffing, those adults do not have the adequate training, or time, or supportive systems to support our students and communities. This is why I'm here tonight. You have the power to help us make the changes that we need in our middle schools through the decisions that you make about the budget for next year. We need smaller classes so that we can attend to the needs of each of our individual students. We need full-time restorative justice coordinators to support our school communities to be safe, welcoming spaces, where students treat each other well. These changes, along with others, in the call for a safe and stable school from PPS middle school communities, will let us begin next school year with the stability that this year has lacked and be able to support our students, take care of each other and ourselves, and stay working with middle schoolers for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colin Hawkins?
Hi, my name is Colin Hawkins. Nice to see you all again. I'm here on behalf of the middle school reps for the PAT. We've met, and as many of us could, in the time we had to discuss some of the bigger problems that we're facing and some of the solutions we think we might have for next year. And we're hoping that we can get your help on it. This is from 13 different middle schools, and it's signed by 49 of the reps in those middle schools. And I know we're going to be increasing the number of middle schools here pretty soon. So there's even more of these issues that are going to come up, and especially with new schools that are being founded and trying to start fresh, like mine, which has only been around for a few years, and most of those years have been during the pandemic, so they're not, they don't really count as a start. So I'll go and read this. I'm going to read the highlights for the most part because I think that it's important for me to stay on point here. This is a call for a safe and stable school from PPS middle school communities. This year, the majority of our middle schools have been plagued with violence amongst our students. And staff and students are subjected to disruptions and in the learning environment, physical injuries, emotional harm from student-on-student harassment, including fighting, bullying, and abuse. Our school communities are left reeling. We need support to restore the harms that have been done. Despite our building administrators' efforts to provide supports to students, educators, and families, the district has not supplied the resources to create safe school environments and address these violent challenges. The unilateral changes made by PPS central office staff have resulted in a systemic breakdown in the disciplinary practices laid out in Article 9 of the PAT/PPS contract and the Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. A lack of consistent systems allows for more room for disproportionate discipline, not less. Boundaries for middle school children set forth in the Student Handbook are necessary for the safety and beneficial, and are beneficial to all students. In addition to failing to support the creation of systems in our schools and successfully operationalize district's own policies on multi-tiered systems of support and school climate, including fundamental student safety, district leadership has also failed to provide wraparound services to our students, so desperately needed, to address the deep trauma underlying much of our students' behavioral issues. These unresolved needs have led to an unstable and unsafe school environment. I'd like to highlight some of the things that are already in this letter. I'm sure you can read over themselves. And I hesitate to read something aloud to somebody who can read it themselves. But the main points here is that we would really like to have a first day for sixth graders where they are not with seventh and eighth graders, give them a chance to actually get acclimated to the school, talk about behavior, all the pieces that are there so they're not terrified, four-foot-tall kids going to a school with six-foot-eight eighth graders, and it's scary. We want to amend the budget to provide a full-time, building-based, restorative justice coordinator for each of those schools. And that means it needs to be somebody who is in that school. It needs to not be somebody who is from the district, who is up to their eyeballs and water and cannot even see the students, let alone help us with our problems. We need to provide educators with sufficient time in their schedules, that's the paid schedule, not after school or before school, to actually engage in the restorative justice work with students and families. And I heard the district say on the news last night that we're doing circles. And if that's the extent that they think that restorative justice is actually finished, they don't understand the process either. We would like to amend the budget to increase staff to hold class sizes to more than 30 students. I know Ms. Bonilla already said that, and I definitely second that. We want to establish common expectations for all community organizations working within middle schools to collaborate with staff around how the school building should be working and how they should interact with students during the school day to help prevent confusion. And if you'll let me, I'll go for the last two of these things, and I'll be, I'll be done. We want to provide support to educators in communicating with families. We need to be able to text our families. We need to be able to use social media. We need to do it in a legal fashion, not using my personal phone. The district has the ability to give all these messages to families, and quite frankly, they've lied on several occasions. And I'm tired of seeing that. Our families are tired of seeing that. We'd like to be able to communicate with what's going on in the classroom, what's going on in the school. So we need to be able to text. And if that means buying phones for those teachers that can actually have texting capability, fine. Whatever it's going to take, we just need to have that ability. With respect to fighting and behavioral problems this year, the most difficult times are at lunch. We have a three-and-a-half-hour window of lunch at my school where we can't get ahold of anybody for help. And the district shows up often in the morning, often in the afternoon. They show up at lunch, but they never free up any of our personnel. So there's nobody to do those restorative justice, restorative justice processes. And we're seeing a lot of violence during lunch, and especially after lunch during the day after kids are already escalated. Not a lot of learning is happening fifth and sixth period, I'll be honest. Guarantees that students will be held accountable for acts and threats of violence. Given the current state of affairs, that safety piece is really critically important. We're looking at a lot of gun violence in this country, and people are quite frankly terrified, and it was really scary to go to school today. So we really need to actually guarantee that we're going consistent, and we're being consistent in holding kids accountable for any threats of violence, any acts of violence, any bullying, any sexual harassment, and harassment of any kind, both to students and to educators and to paraprofessionals and to our cafeteria support and our custodial support. In a transparent manner, we'd like to communicate to all middle school staff what concrete supports are being put in place to help administrators establish, improve on, and effectively communicate with our community on school-wide expectations and the mechanisms of how those things will actually be enforced. When we ask for things in writing, we don't get writing. We get platitudes, we get verbal conversations in the hallway, what might be happening. We have programs that exist because they're an idea, they're unstaffed. I still don't have another AP in my building. I still don't have a restorative justice person in my building. I still don't have anybody running the study hall as promised at the beginning of the year. We're still suffering. So we really do need extra help. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the letter with the clear.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Can you unpack for me when you said there's not a lot of learning done in fifth and sixth period?
I'm implying that after our lunchtime drama that happens in a school that has very little support, there's usually two adults for extended periods of time in the lunchroom. There's a few adults out on the field during our recess time, which is about 10 to 15 minutes. So there's a lot of stress that happens during that time, both because of things that happened over the course of the last year, or things that happened that day. And so when kids come back from lunch, they come back hot. And oftentimes, there's kids who can't go back to class or won't go back to class. They wander the halls, creating a whole bunch of issues for teachers trying to educate their students. When we've asked for consistent discipline to be given to those students, or a place for them to actually receive help, or to have restorative justice being done with those students, we've gotten none of those things. So when I say that there's very little learning being done in fifth and sixth period, I mean that for a lot of our students, fifth and sixth period aren't happening. It's not 90% of the students. A lot of the students are in the classroom. But if I have an eighth grader pushing into my seventh grade classroom four different times during sixth period to interrupt my class, talk to a student, come in and buy a Gatorade, harass somebody, do anything else, am I doing a lot of teaching that day? No. So no, not a lot of learning is being done fifth and sixth period, fourth period. After lunch is really hard. And I'm not saying that because teachers have given up. We're still working hard. But this is hard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Appleyard?
One more time, Kara's?
Melissa Appleyard?
Going once? Okay. Thank you for the testimony. Now, let's go ahead and transition into our conversation. And I know we're going to have some questions for the superintendent and staff. I think I already heard one of them, and I'm totally blanking on what it was.
On the restorative justice, because there was a question and an answer, but I'm not, I'm not sure the answer was that there was going to be restorative justice coordinators in each school, so.
And I noticed that there's 12 positions for mental health professionals for middle school and K8s, and then four for campus safety associates at middle school and high school. So I want, I wanted to ask the question of, do those meet any of the needs of restorative justice folks, or what are those positions and how will they help support what we heard tonight, which is that middle schools definitely need some more?
And I would like to get some clarification. And I don't know who I would, who I would be asking it to when we start talking about RESJ. Before, before I would feel comfortable talking about whether or not we should put it in every school, I think I'd like to talk a little bit about the process and the system itself. Because as, as much as I love every teacher in this room, I love y'all, I support y'all, RESJ has to be a system-wide approach. And I've been in schools where teachers refuse to be a part of the healing circle, and they walk away saying that they need their, their union rep because they don't want to be a part of that, that situation. And we can't act like that doesn't happen because if we start talking about restorative justice, that means that everybody in the circle recognizes that they played a part in the harm that was caused, which includes possibly the teacher. And when it's time for the teacher to apologize to a child because they were actually the one that caused the wrong, then they have often stepped out of the classroom refusing to do so. So before I would ever sign off on a, an RESJ person being in every school, I would like to make sure that we have, again, it's a system-wide approach that has to happen from the top down. If the entire school doesn't believe in it, then it doesn't work and teachers get to walk away. Again, I'm not trying to say that teachers are bad people here. That's not, that's not what this is about. But this is about understanding that if you're going to say we need to put RESJ in the schools, then we have to make sure that RESJ works for everybody in the schools. That's all I'm saying.
And if the district doesn't have a punitive approach to teachers when they cause unintentional harm. So that's the problem.
Dr. Proctor?
Hi, good evening. Acting Chair Scott, and Directors, Superintendent, and Student Representative Weinberg. Good to see you all. Just really briefly, I heard the question emerge about the FTE, the additional FTE. And we do have 12 that we have identified primarily for our middle years. We noted it as middle school and K8s, but the focus is going to be on the middle years specifically within six, eight. And those 12 could be restorative justice staff. It could be a combination of social workers, counselors, mental health professionals. What we will do is engage our schools in a process where they can give input based on some of the climate data that they're seeing this year, what the leader indicates as needs, what the school community indicates as needs, and then allow some input before a final decision is made. But it could look like a restorative justice. It could be, again, some of these other support staff based on the school's need and how they determine that need.
I had a follow-up question to that, because under the general fund, we're seeing a decrease of five FTE for guidance services, which includes counseling services, a decrease in five FTE for psych services, which includes school psychologists, and a decrease in five FTE for speech pathologists or audiology services. So this 12, would that fulfill the decrease that we are seeing?
That's right. That's right. So we're looking at how we could be very school-facing and very school-specific, and identifying staff that would be housed at the school.
So I think the issue that I would like to address here is just the level of discretion by the principals, because what I'm hearing Dr. Proctor say is that it would be similar to how it is now. Our principals have a lot of discretion on how they're going to deploy certain resources. So some of our schools have full-time restorative justice specialists that they have used their equity funds to, to pay for, or that they've just made, they've made trade-offs at the building level to determine what they want. So I think the conversation for us to have, I think we heard very clear from PAT, that they want to see this as a designated position for each of our schools, so that it can't get swapped out for whatever else a building leader might, might need. So I just want to frame that that, that's the conversation I think we should have around that.
And that's exactly what I was saying to Director Green, is his question about how does RJ show up in, in different schools, that that's part of the culture and the climate, kind of going to his comment and questions. So that, I was just like, oh, yeah, that answers that a little bit. But I think that's different than what we're hearing from PAT about a carve-out for that specific thing. So that's the tension of building autonomy.
Yeah, in addition to those 12 FTE, we've also allocated $750,000 to support middle schools in site-specific plans. So we heard clearly the need to make a serious investment in the middle schools, and including the middle school wraparound supports. And so we wanted to note that we are recommending and have added to the budget $750,000 to augment middle schools with additional supports. to augment, uh, middle schools with additional supports as well.
Yeah, so to, to, to provide, you know, tonight, the nine million dollars includes the twelve mental health professionals, uh, as, uh, Dr. Proctor alluded to. Previously, when we came back, uh, we came to you, uh, on April twenty-sixth, uh, our budget already included seven hundred and fifty thousand of one-time ESER dollars to provide middle school supports. I wanna be clear, we haven't made a decision on what those FTE positions are. Because right now, our deputy, our, our Deputy Superintendent and, uh, our, regional superintendents are working with the school, uh, schools to develop site-specific plans that would most likely than not provide restorative, uh, specialists and climate ju- climate specialists, et cetera, et cetera. But again, those are being worked on as we speak, um, with, with school principals.
Yeah. I'm, 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 I'm just really quickly on that point, will we have more clarity in three weeks when we adopt the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me, we can have Margaret.
Regional Superintendent Margaret Catbird to come forward.
You'll, you'll find several line items that, that really aim to provide additional resources. But we haven't been prescriptive about a particular strategy. We've said, school community, school leaders, you have a school improvement plan. What, what is it that you need? We don't wanna make assumptions about that. And maybe it's a social worker, maybe we did add seven counselors, continued investment, et cetera. Uh, but Margaret, maybe you can talk about the process and, and when you anticipate having a, a, a good idea of, of what, what their suggested, uh, asks are.
Yes, thanks, thanks so much for the, the question, good evening, um, Chair, Deputy Chair, Scott.
Andrew.
Acting Chair, so all of the above, so, um, and, uh, members and, uh, Jackson, Student Representative Weinberg. Um, so we're in the process, on Friday, we will, um, uh, there'll be the initial draft of school improvement plans will be completed and submitted. That'll be part of the process of saying what are the pieces that, um, schools are gonna be looking for in the upcoming year. We'll, uh, use that as part of the, the basis for the discussion. We also, uh, spent time this, uh, past week doing an initial request sort of out to, um, middle school administrators. What we're gonna see and what we have at least initially, uh, is that there is an overlap and a nexus with what you're hearing from, um, uh, our PAT colleagues, that there is an interest in, uh, uh, restorative justice along with some other pieces. And so I think the question will be, how does that get prioritized based on the site? And that we see that as a collaborative process that should be happening, um, both with, um, at the school side, with the instructional leadership teams as they build out their school improvement plans, but then also with us as a district and working, um, not only in OSP with, but also with our partners in OSSs who, um, support both the mental health supports but also, uh, the RJ specialists.
Thanks. Director Hollins?
Yeah, I have a quick question, so the, if I heard, um, correctly, those seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we've allocated, allocated for that were one-time dollars?
Y- yes.
So what happens?
They're from ESER.
So what happens in year twenty-three, twenty-four?
You know, it's gonna be a part of that budget conversation where we look at what's working and, uh, benefits and then have some discussions about, uh, trade-offs so that we can maintain, uh, those programs and those, um, you know, positions, if you will, that are really, uh, most supportive to students. So it would be a part of the trade-off conversation for next year.
I have a, um, question, and maybe for Chief Delgado, but, um, the five point eight million dollar for HB forty thirty, has that been? I, I, I know, I noticed it's in our, it's in our budget as an add. Um, has that been allocated out or because we're still in conversation with our labor partners, is it, is it sort of being held?
It has not been allocated out. We have it as a placeholder in our actual updated, uh, amendment. So we, we're anticipating it, but it's not.
You've created appropriation authority for it, but we have not.
Thank you, yes, yeah. I wasn't sure if anyone would understand.
It's okay.
He will geek out with you all day long.
All day long. Um, and, and we don't wanna get ahead of, I guess I'm, I'm struggling a little. We don't wanna get ahead of that process because the, my understanding of legislation specifically asks us to collaborate with our labor partners and co-create, which is what we wanna do. I'm also hearing from our labor partners, you know, we could use some of that money as we look at ways to, you know, to, to, to make potential changes to this budget. I, how, how do we, how do we bridge that in this timeframe where we are?
I think that's my.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, good question, so I believe the, um, application process opened up, uh, a couple of weeks ago, maybe, maybe three weeks ago, and the application is due next week. So it was a very short timeline to turn around the collaboration, uh, create, uh, the grant application itself and, and turn it in by next week. Uh, we are in conversations, uh, with our labor partners about the use of those funds as we are required to do. We also are, uh, are engaging our, uh, principals, uh, and a principal group and, and how those funds should best be used as well. So it's, it's a process that has not yet, uh, coalesced around a, a recommendation, but that's, uh, coming shortly.
And if we, if we had agreement to use some of that for our, our para-retention bonuses, that, that would free up one point two million of general fund that could be allocated somewhere else.
Sure, everything is a trade-off, right? Oh, this is your question?
Or to the fund balance, but yes.
Sure.
Well, that's no fun.
But it's his job, it's his job.
So I'm picking your answer.
Yeah, okay.
So some of the uses of HB forty thirty would have to be negotiated and some of the uses would be at the district's discretion. All of it has to be, uh, approved in the grant application process.
Um, are there additional clarif- actually, I, I'd like to move on as a board to potential, like, yeah, thoughts, uh, amendments? I don't wanna, I don't wanna invite amendments if there aren't any, but if there are, let's get them on the table.
I have a couple of thoughts and questions, uh, do you look like you do as well?
It was more just a comment on Director Green's, um, comment, I guess, commenting on his comment about, um, restorative justice professionals. Because I've seen a lot of additional harm done bu- through RJ in our schools , um, because it hasn't been implemented with fidelity, um, or done well. I've seen students forced into circles and that is not a key tenet of restorative justice. There needs to be agreement from all sides to participate wholeheartedly in this. And if we are gonna fund restorative justice professionals in every single middle school, then it needs to be a system-wide approach that starts at the district by looking at our policies that are sometimes punitive and contribute to disproportional outcomes in students. So I say this just because I've been invested in this work. I was a part of the Restorative Justice Coalition of Oregon and I have tremendous resources around how to implement, um, restorative justice, um, as a system-wide approach. I don't think we've done that yet. And I think if we are making this investment, there's other investments that need to go with it. It can't just be the restorative justice professionals that we're pushing into schools.
Thank you. A- and actually, as we go into this conversation, let's go ahead and get the motion on the table. So do I have a motion and second to adopt Resolution six five one-two? Thank you.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Director Green and seconded by Director Konstam. Um, let's jump into board discussion.
So I have, uh, I don't know if it's a motion or whatever, but, so I'm looking at the, oh, sorry. So I'm looking at the budget piece and I guess I'm just really wary of using the one-time funds for positions. Um, so this is just kind of a thought, um, that I'm having. If the seven hundred and fifty thousand that we're using for, uh, support services would come out of that nine million, uh, because, and if we use that one point two million that we could potentially have from the forty thirty, we could supplement that seven fifty from that. And then that seven fifty, we can go, we can look, look at it going back to the general fund or back to our savings. Um, I'm just really nervous about the budget that we have that it hasn't really been talked about as far as the next year's budget that we're gonna have. And we're, it, it, I understand that it's a need right now, but it's gonna be a need the next year as well and the year after that. The need is not gonna go away just if we put all the money in this year. Um, and so as I look at some of this budget stuff as far as prioritizing some of the things, I think we need to make sure that we're prioritizing our kids for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year as well. Uh, and that just kinda blowing a lot right now. Um, so, and I, I don't know if this is amendment or not, but if I see that seven fifty that we're talking about, that came out of the nine million. And then if we hold off on the one point two million because that could potentially come out of the forty thirty, we can, we can slide that seven fifty, you know, out of that one point two.
I'm not sure where the seven fifty is coming.
Is ESER money for the middle school supports?
Right, so I think if we, right, so that means if we can, those ESER, well, the ESER funds, I would like to move that out of the nine million cuz those are positions.
But we have to spend it.
We have to spend the ESER, okay. I, I'm not following, so the seven fifty that's for middle school is not in this, it's in the budget. In ESER money, and you wanna move it out of ESER? But we have to spend the ESER by the twenty-four school year, right?
Correct.
Well, gotcha, so.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm not, I'm asking cuz I'm not sure, so I'm, I'm confused, I, I didn't mean to have that come across like I was.
No worries.
I'm just, I'm trying to track with you.
I'm just looking at, we move that seven fifty out of the ESER dollars, right? And put that out of the one point, out of the nine million. We replace the one point two million that we potentially gonna get from the forty thirty. Then we can use part of that nine million for the seven fifty, the one point two million would be, would be reduced. And then we could have another seven fifty for the ESER funds to go for something else that we could maybe roll over for next year.
Over for next year.
Or, or wherever we need to trade some stuff out that we can pay for now.
Okay, I'm, I'm try, I'm with you now, I got it, thank you.
Gotcha. So that's just kind of some thoughts that I'm having as, um, reading some of this stuff. And I, I, I'm gonna write it out for me so it'll be a little bit more.
Okay, you're gonna, you're gonna write it, okay, good, I'm not quite following these. I, I do wanna, I wanna amplify what you're saying though cuz I think it's an important part of this conversation and I'm glad folks are here for this. I, I think one of the things, at least in the, in the emails that I'm getting and some of the conversations I'm having with people, it's getting lost how much one-time money we already are spending. And, and, you know, I'm gonna be blunt, when I read the PTA letter that says, you know, we need, we need more resources in the classroom, it, it's sort of ignoring the, the trade-off that we already are making. And, and, you know, the superintendent's budget and what we have in front of us now uses, uh, I forgot the number, fifty?
Forty million.
Forty-nine million of, of one-time funding to do a lot of the things that the community is asking. What I'm hearing is, but we, we, you know, we want even more, we want every single, you know, um, teaching position to be retained despite losing, you know, eight percent of our students. And, and I wanna be clear, that is something we can do. We can take money from our rainy day fund and, and keep every one of those positions. We will have massive layoffs next year as a result. And I've gotten some really thoughtful emails from people that have said, that may be, and we still need it now. I will take that teacher for one year and, and even if you have to lay them off next year. And I wanna ask whether you will all be here next year when we're giving out two, three, four hundred pink slips? So this year, again, we're reducing positions without, without laying people off. When we're actually laying people off and saying, th- this, you know, we spent all of that, we have no more reserves, we have no more cushion. Are, are you gonna be here saying, absolutely, we said it, we thank you for the year and we're, and we're good? I, I have to be honest, I don't think you will be, I think you'll be frustrated. And, and so here's the thing, I, I, there are things that can happen in the middle. We can go to the state legislature and ask for a lot of money, we've done that every legislative session, we've, we've never, we've never got.
Well, hold on, it, well, it's not necessarily predictable, you can make assumptions based on past years.
Yeah, so you can make assumptions that if we don't survive this next year, there won't be a following year to go back to.
So I, so I, and I, I, thanks, so I just wanna say, it makes me very nervous. That said, I, I've already indicated I'm comfortable going to six percent on, 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 which is where we are right now. I'm very, and, but I wanna be also clear, six percent is dangerously low. So best practice is fifteen to sixteen percent. We never got to that point, we were at eleven, we're going down to six percent, it is dangerously low. And when I think about, and people say, well, what could happen? Oh, well, like, you know, a global pandemic, right? Where we have to start using these funds for lots of things. I wanna be really clear that people understand the consequences. If we, if something happens and we have to use some of that, those reserves next year and we run out and the school district becomes insolvent, that's a state takeover. That means the school actually shuts down. It is not legal for us to operate if we don't have those funds in the bank. This is where, you know, collective bargaining agreements get thrown out, right, by courts. It is, it is, it is absolutely catastrophic for the district for that to happen. And so I just wanna keep coming back that if, if this was simply, cuz I keep hearing, you've got plenty of money. And I wanna state factually, we don't. We do not have plenty of money, there is an absolute shortfall this year. And the balance is how much of that money do we, do we essentially keep in our reserve to make sure that the catastrophe doesn't happen? And I think that's where this balance that I, I, it, it, this, this budget, I'm willing to support six percent and it still makes me extremely nervous. And I, I'm gonna be saying it next year when we're doing it, if, if the magic money doesn't fall from the state legislature or somewhere else and, and, and we're doing these cuts, like, we're gonna have to come back to this conversation and recognize these are the decisions we're making, so. Would you like to say something?
Yes, please.
Would you, do you mind, yeah, coming up? And I, I'm way, by the way, every time I do this, they're like, do not give that guy the gavel again, so please.
Uh, thank you, um, I was trying to be a good student and just raise my hand and wait patiently. Um, so I, there are a couple of points, right? I think, uh, Jackson, uh, Student Representative Weinberg really made a clear point around RESJ um, and how important it is to have everyone on the same page. Um, I have, I know one of the best ways to build rapport with my students is to apologize because for the first time, they see that this adult is willing to be held accountable by a younger human. And so I very much value RESJ. I think one of the biggest concerns, especially from educators, that we also heard is that we do RESJ in name but not in spirit. So we have had educators who are saying, yes, let's have a restorative circle, let's, let's support the student. And what administration ends up doing is taking the student and having a quick conversation. In element, in elementary school, we get Uno cards or candy coming back to our classroom and that's it, and that was RESJ. And that's not, that's not what we're asking for. We're asking for the training, which has been promised to us and is in our contract and we still haven't gotten. Um, we are asking for personnel that is dedicated specifically to that in order to provide that PD, in order to provide that support for students. So I agree, I think it needs to be done well, it needs to be done comprehensively. And then I think when it comes to the budget, yes, we need to have fiscal responsibility, right? Like this, we need to keep our district public and in our hands, not in the hands of the state. And what I want to propose to y'all, um, especially as the president-elect who will be on full-time release is that I am dedicated to pushing our legislature to ensure that we are fully funding our district to the QEM. Because when we really stop and think about it, we are the largest district in the state. We're also the largest educational union in the state together with the support that we've been able to bring to this board. We can make some, some changes, we can push for things, right? And I know that there's a little bit of that like, well, that's just pie in the sky. But it's also, if there is no hope, then what's the point, right? We've gotta keep fighting and we've gotta keep pushing because we know what's best practice and we can't keep doing less than that and expect a different result. And so what I think is really important is, you know, how can we creatively, uh, propose this to the state? Could we be a pilot program for the QEM? Could the largest district with the largest, uh, uh, labor partners be the ones working hand-in-hand to ensure that our QEM model actually works? And what would that funding look like? It would be a smaller percentage for the state than doing it across the state, right? So how other, what other ways can we be creative in our proposals to the state to ensure that we start this process? Because it is twenty twenty-two, it's about to be twenty twenty-three. We have been underserving our kids for way too long and we have to do something different. And so I'm willing to put, you know, my name on the line, my position on the line, saying that I will be here, I will be in Salem, I will be wherever I need to be, and I know that we have tons of families and student leaders and educators willing to be there too. And so we're inviting y'all to be part of that solution, we understand. And I, I don't want us to be taken over by the state, I hear the concern. How do we avoid that? How do we push forward? How do we ensure that we continue to prioritize our students? Um, and so I just wanted to kinda jump in and just share that we're willing, we see it, we believe you, we're willing to do this, but we've gotta do it together.
And I, and I, and I a hundred percent appreciate the hope piece, right? But with hope, you gotta have a plan and you gotta have a backup, right? You know, when, when the civil rights movement happened, they was hoping for change, but when they got arrested, they had a plan and a backup to get bailed out, right? So I am all for, for going and, and advocating with the state and all that, and, and all that. And, like, look, Mr., Director Green always says, I don't have a problem standing on the, on the table and, and doing what we gotta do to get it. But we have to have a plan in case it, it doesn't happen when we want it to happen, right? We gotta have a backup in case it doesn't happen when we want it to happen. And that, and that's all I'm, that's where I'm coming at, it's like, let's, let's do that, you know? Cuz when I look at the QEM and if I'm correct, it's about eighteen, eighteen thousand nine hundred per, per kid. We're far from that right now, right? And there's, that's what the state has been saying for years, for years. There has been lobbying at the. There has been lobbying at the state to, to, to fund at this level, for years. You know, I talked to Senator Lou Frederick. When he was in there, I mean, funding from, from, funding from the state has always been an ongoing battle, period. That's historically, we know that, that's not, that's just, that's what has happened. So if we're going to do that, we have to have a plan and a backup plan. So that way, if something happens, our kids, because at the end of the day, our kids is the one that suffer. You don't suffer, you don't suffer, I don't suffer, our kids suffer. And so I want to make sure that our kids are not suffering regardless of my feelings around stuff or how I feel that stuff should be done. We have to look at what happens with our kids if this doesn't happen in the timing that we want it to happen.
Imagine what we could do with that $3 billion kicker in education in Oregon.
Absolutely. And I think too, there have been folks fighting and lobbying for years, I do not want to discount that. I also wonder when's the last time a school district and their labor partners have come together to ask and advocate for those changes at the state level.
I'm going with you.
Okay, here we go.
Let's do it, let's do it. We were just talking about this at Intergovernmental, that we want to work together to create opportunities for teachers and parents and students to go to Salem during the session next year and to advocate for better funding for our schools. And so that's definitely something that the Intergovernmental Committee will want to talk to you about and find ways that we can work together to make that happen.
Yes, and I agree that there needs to be kind of a backup plan and making sure that we're thinking about what are other ways that we, what are we going to do if this fails? And I think it's really important to kind of pause and ask the why behind some of the spending, especially when we're thinking about recruitment and retention, right? Like, I know one of the positions in these materials was adding more central office staff for recruitment in order to, oh. Oh, it, okay. Thank you. So it is already existing, it is not added. It was answering a question that was on the FAQ. Thanks. Yeah, no problem, thanks for the fact check, real time. Um, and so I'm just, again, wondering, where are we deciding to invest? And is that investment actually congruent with the realities we see on the ground? Like our ATU partners are saying and our SEIU partners are saying, "We can go and put flyers everywhere, we can put advertisements on the side of the bus", but if I'm still getting paid more as a high school student at a summer job than I would be as a custodian at a high school, that's a problem. So really trying to make, trying to think about this as a bigger system while trying to figure out, how can we kind of push forward and, and move things around in order to get a better long-term result? But I have probably taken enough of your time.
No, thank you, I appreciate the comments. All right, I'm going to put a challenge to this board of whether we can approve this budget no later than 10:15 and preferably earlier. So let's get things on the table, if we have anything, or we can sort of move forward. I think there's been a lot of conversation, so.
Okay.
Take it away.
Sorry.
Nope.
I spoke a lot during the Southeast Guiding Coalition.
I just wanted to say, was Gary finished with his amendment? Or he's worked, okay, he's going to write it out.
I want to ask a question about process. So I think we can have this conversation without amendments, because what the resolution before us says for approval is that we approve the superintendent's proposal. And I think that we're about to have a conversation about maybe being a little more directive about some of these funds, but not adding funds is what I'm sensing here. Um, and so I think we can have a conversation where we talk about trade-offs and we talk about more specificity to certain elements of the superintendent's proposal and, um, you know, ask the superintendent to rework it for our adoption after we approve.
Process, it's going to depend on the nature of what we're asking. There are some things, if they're in the same bucket and we're asking for a different sort of emphasis, that, that can be done within the existing budget. If, if we're moving it between buckets, then it would need to be amended, uh, because again, what's been filed would need to be amended. And then obviously, there are bigger changes that would need more. The other thing I will say, this is not our final bite at the apple. So we can also direct the superintendent and his team over the next three weeks to further refine some of these and come back to us with proposals. So, so for instance, one option is, you know, if, if we are interested in, in pursuing some of the things that, you know, that PAT put on the table, which, which I will tell you I am, we don't, we don't have to, we can amend the budget tonight if we're clear on that. We can also direct the superintendent to come back with an amendment in the adopted that does those things, so. Director Bemidorms.
Thank you. So, I guess I want to first, there's, there's some things in here that, in the nine million that I want to thank the staff for adding in. And, um, I, I love the equity in the field trips and travel, making this room ADA accessible, the supports for the Southeast Portland schools, just based on tonight's conversation, that's going to be super important. But I have a couple more things that I'm still interested in. And I definitely would be interested in moving the 1.2 into the 4030 bucket so that we have those funds available. And I'm interested in, uh, the middle school class sizes. Um, I, I just look at those numbers and like, having been at Oakley Green a couple of weeks ago, it was like, there was 25 kids in the class and it was a teeny class and I'm, you know, there was, I don't know, five or six kids absent. And it was like, how could they ever have six more kids in this class? Um, so I'm interested in what that would cost, um, as a, as a question. And then I'm going to go back to a conversation we had last week. And, um, there may not be support on, on the board, but I, I want to raise it because I think you challenged me, Director Scott, with like, "What's so magic about 30", when I was talking about the class sizes at the elementary schools. And I guess I have a question for the district staff, is like, "What's so magic about 33"? Um, because that is the number that, um, like, we just put five. And I appreciate the additional five FTE that went into schools, but that, that was to get it so that we have 100% of our, of our schools below the maximum. And when I'm looking at just different, um, just different information, I'm wondering where the 33 came from, because if you look at QEM, I mean, it's way, the numbers are way lower. Um, if you look at what we agreed to with PAT in, in terms of the staffing, the staffing model, um, the maximum thresholds, like for first, third grade are 26, fourth to fifth is 28. And so I, I just, I guess, I, I want to understand the rationale of why 33, because we still have, I don't know, 13 K5s that, that still have over, over 30. And it's not, it's not that it's, it's not that it's magic, but it's better. And I look at these other models and I don't, I don't understand how the district's decided on the max. I mean, I, I think it was more of a, just like, being realistic, like, hey, this, in the, when the staffing model got built, not necessarily based on best practice. So I'd be interested in like, like where the 33 came from. And like I said, it doesn't necessarily square with the, um, let's say, with QEM prototypes of like best practice or even the, what we agreed to in the contract. So I, I still am focused on that other piece. And I see Dr. Adams coming down here to tell me about the 33.
Answer your question, yeah.
That's a nice tie.
Thank you, it's meant to mesmerize you so you don't ask me questions.
Mesmerize? It's clearly not working.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to take my mask off so my glasses don't fog up on me, I can still see you. And we understand that class size is very important to our community. And as a special educator, I know the value of having fewer students in my classroom and what that meant to me, um, as an educator. One of the things that we've tried to do this year, I think, one, let's talk about the PAT contract thresholds. Those are ideals, we've agreed to them. I think in my estimation, Sharon, don't, don't shoot me with an arrow, we would need to revisit those to keep an equity-based staffing model. Because if those are the thresholds for all schools, what then become the thresholds for our Title I, CSI and TSI schools, right? So that, and we know that reaching just those thresholds will cost us, um, I think it's 100, 100 FTE. I don't have that with me this week, um, because I didn't compile that note and put it back in my binder.
I guess I wasn't necessarily, I'm, I'm just looking at getting it further lower, not getting it, even necessarily getting it down to the PAT thresholds, but just, I don't know, after the pandemic, um, I, I can't see having 31, 32 students in a classroom. And I support the equity, the equity formula, that that should be lower as well, but. So I'm not suggesting getting down to the threshold, but I, I guess I'm, I'm just curious, the 33, where did?
Well, being new, I can say the 33 was here when I got here.
That's a good answer.
That's the honest answer.
No, that's, that's a good answer.
It was here when I got here.
I think that's why we should ask those questions.
And we have worked towards.
Sorry, as part of your budget, you did lower the maximums in middle school by one, correct?
We did.
Okay, so I don't want to lose that.
And we lowered at some elementary grades as well.
Yeah.
You know, we did both of those things. Um, trying to be fiscally prudent, understanding that we couldn't lower everything across the board for all, um, I don't know, is this working? Oh, there we go. Knowing that we couldn't lower everything across the board for all types of schools because we did not have, we did not project to have the resources to do that. So what, that's why we continue to say that we're making progress towards those goals. That means we're not there yet, we're admitting that we're not there yet and that there's still growth and room for us to go.
And I appreciate, I appreciate that because, um, I, I think it's really hard, having spent 25 years going down to Salem, asking for support, I mean, one, and, and having, I mean, a lot of legislators have kids in our, in our school system. And, um, you know, I think we do have to set, what I've found is we're most effective is when we ask for what we think we need versus what, what's going to fit in the budget. Because if we ask for what we need, and this is why I asked the question, is like, why is it 33? Because like, what, what do we think is the best thing for our students? And then how do we work towards that versus like, this is the number? And I, I think a great practice, as somebody who's been around a long time, is to challenge the, if you got here and that was the number and that's not the right number for our students, then we should be looking at, like, what, what is the right number for our students? Um, so I really appreciate you acknowledging that we, you know, if, if we need to look at something different and then go down to Salem, you know, with our labor partners to talk about this, you know, you want, um, these supports in the classrooms and for us to have an equity focus and have extra resources to support our, um, our students of color and historically underserved students. And this is what it costs. But I think that's the most compelling versus, we're going to try and from note.
So, so I, I think you may, let me clarify what I mean. Two things can be true, and two things are true in this situation. We can and should advocate for more for students. We also have a fiscal reality of how much funding we have for next year and a date by which a budget must be approved. And those two things can both be worked on at the same time. So what we have presented as a staffing proposal is working within our means to reduce class sizes where we could to the maximum extent possible. We realized we still had some yellow sections in that elementary. We went back and addressed those because we figured we could afford that in talking to Chief Delgado deal. And, um, we think we should, I mean, every conversation I've been in with the superintendent has been about QEM and talking about how we need to advocate for more. So I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm saying that we need to do both. I have a responsibility to do both, is to advocate and to work within what I know is our funding for next year.
I think what's important in this conversation is that we not lose sight of how differentiated our staffing formula is and that, you know, the vast majority of our schools, if you look at, you know, every single classroom, particularly going from our Title and our CSI and TSI schools, you're looking at numbers of like 18, 20, 22. I mean, that's, that's what is most typical. Um, it gets, it gets worse as we get to our higher SES schools. And, and that's with some exceptions. And that's where you see these classes bumping up against, you know, 30, 31, which nobody wants to see. None of us want to be having that conversation. But we don't want to let go of the values behind how we're prioritizing. And to just bring it back to hopefully trying to land this conversation, I mean, I, I appreciate that Ms. Bonilla had a very specific ask around middle schools, which is, you know, less than 30 for our Title and TSI schools, um, which I think is probably quite doable and reasonable. You got to be careful with middle schools because averages don't tell the whole story. You know, you've got some really small classes, you've got some really big classes. So for me, I would, I would prioritize looking at our core, um, content areas for, uh, for limiting, for putting those class size limits on. And I actually think then we're looking at a number of classrooms that we can address, that we can allocate more to.
Yeah, and given the, the proposed budget that we, um, have before you this evening, um, the question then becomes, what would be the additional trade-offs, right? Um, so while we did earmark and identify where the additional nine million could be spent, even throughout the budget, where we talk about how we are prioritizing the needs of our, um, you know, our most critical schools, then that comes with a trade-off, right? If we were to go back and, and then what would the cost be? What would the additional cost be? And then where would those trade-offs land?
Although we have identified through some, some savvy switching, we have identified 1.2 million dollars that we can put into play in service to these kind of goals.
I want to, I want to.
Well, we did point that out. I've heard mixed sort of reaction for the best way to leverage it. Is it bank it to the fund balance to offset reductions next year? Or is it come up with a, a next list of the priorities that we've heard? It sounds like middle schools, you know, as a focus. So we're going to need clear direction on where the board is with, you know. And, and, and we're earmarking 40, 40, 30 monies.
Gary's furiously writing his.
Ahead of time, so, you know, we're still in process of developing a recruitment and retention grant application. And if we're saying that we're all going to be in agreement if we do that, then, then we'll proceed in that fashion if that's the direction.
So I want to float an idea for the board about essentially, essentially directing the superintendent to come back as part of the adopted budget process with amendments that would do two things. I think I'm capturing some of the early testimony. Would get class sizes at our TSI and Title middle schools to 30 or less. And that would.
All class sizes?
Yeah, because I think like band and PE, like, are we talking to everybody?
So core, class sizes?
I think there's a better term. Is it, there's performance classes and is it core classes is the other?
It's core.
Core?
Core?
Okay.
Okay, I mean, I'm doing this on the fly. So core, say, so, so core classes at 30 or less and restorative justice positions at every middle school. And I would separate those out as, as two, two separate amendments. And I think that would allow us as part of the adopted budget to look at those trade-offs. And, and superintendent, I guess what I would ask is, you know, your best recommendation on where that would come from. I will just, speaking for myself, I would prefer not to go below 6% on the fund balance. So I'd prefer to look at other offsets. And, and if, if the new HB 4030 money can be used, that's great. If there's some other places to look. But, but I, but I want to be clear about those offsets. And if those offsets from a staff perspective, if you think those offsets are not worth the benefit we would get, then let's have that conversation. But my suggestion is, it gives us a couple of weeks to, to put together a thoughtful proposal that we can discuss as part of the adopted budget.
If that were the direction, then of course, we've got to do, we got to do the calculations to see, well, how far can we go with 1.2 to reduce core classroom sizes at the middle grades level? And I'm assuming you mean all middle grade classrooms regardless if it's a K8 or comprehensive. And we might be able to squeeze a little more out of it if our other line items and our principals, which are sounding like they're identifying restorative justice coordinators, if, if that's taken care of in our other line items, we might be able to take the 1.2 further on the middle grades class.
And to clarify, I did say, I did say TSI, CSI and Title middle schools. I think if I'm getting the right.
Mm-hmm.
We want to include the K8s.
Yes, middle.
The middle grades and the K8s.
Yeah.
I'm doing this on the fly, so I'm open to suggestions.
I'm just adding a clarification directive.
But we'll also find in our budget, we've already chipped away at this in a lot of places through things that are already included in the budget proposal. So it's not, it's not a comprehensive, um, revision to what we have in front of us.
I just want to make sure Director Holland heard your statement, Director Scott, around, so what, what Andrew's proposing is to take the 1.2 million and ask staff to look at how far that can go. If we, yeah, if the 4030 money works out.
I'm not, so I'm not being quite that prescriptive. I'm asking the superintendent to come back with, how much would it cost to do those two things? And where would staff recommend those offsets come from?
I would also like to see if we are putting restorative justice professionals in every middle school. Also earmarking some amount of money for PD, for staff and community at schools.
Say that again, Josh.
In addition to professional development.
Adding professional development so that when we're adding these RJ professionals, that they can actually do the work that they need to.
Right, so it's very clear that, you know, for those staff persons, they would need a specific training and development in the true practices for RJ.
Yeah, and also have time to. Yeah, and also have time to give PD to the teachers or professionals at those schools.
I just, I wanted to highlight that, what I thought you were saying, Director Scott, which I got wrong, but I, I think we have a fundamental question here that, that you sort of highlighted, and I think that Director Hollins and, and I are interested in talking about, which is, okay, let's say we get the forty, thirty money and we're able to offset some of that, you know, we're looking at, I think what I saw in the presentation, Superintendent, was we're looking at a hundred and five million dollars that we're spending this year that we don't think we'll have next year. And so, one point two isn't a lot towards that, but it's better than nothing. And so, that conversation about do we retain that one point two then back into the fund balance for the, the next storm that's coming, or do we spend it now? I mean, I think that's, I, I was comfortable with the nine, but I, I continued to really be concerned about the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And if we're going to have to make a hundred and five million dollars in cuts based on, off, from this budget that we have now, that is going to be painful.
Well, I just want to say that we, best practice around the use of those one-time funds is to prioritize more, yeah, capacity building. So, it's, wouldn't be a hundred and five million in cuts because they're not, they're not going to, just to support FTE in that way, but it still would, we will feel it.
I also wonder, as we're decreasing class sizes, if the line item of PAT overload pay stipend will be decreasing because we'll have less teachers at that stipend where they would need to be paid.
That would be true.
Okay.
Okay, that doesn't require, what I just talked about doesn't require amendment. I'm generally seeing noms from folks. Okay, direction around there. Director Hollins, did you have?
I think I got it.
Okay, let's hit it.
I think I got it. So, if we look, we take the seven fifty out of the general funds for the, the seven fifty out of the general fund, then.
Sorry, what was the seven sixty-four again?
The seven, the seven hundred and fifty was for the middle school support piece, right?
That's from ESER.
I know, I know, that's from, yeah, from ESER.
Okay.
Yeah.
You said general fund.
No, we're putting, we're taking it out of the general fund, so we, we're going to leave, we're going to take it out of ESER dollars. We're not going to use ESER, we're going to take out of the general fund.
Oh, okay, got you.
And then we look at the one point two for the retention bonus out of the HB forty, we anticipate that. So, that leaves us seven hundred and fifty thousand in ESER funds to still be used for something else. And then that gives us, my math is right, that gives us four hundred and fifty thousand that we would have used out of that nine that we could potentially put back into the general fund.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm still a little bit lost. What, when you say using the, so instead of using ESER, using the general fund, what's, what's, where's the general fund money coming from?
That's nine million.
Basically out of, yeah, basically out of the nine million. So, if we put the seven fifty, we take the seven fifty out of this nine million, that leaves us eighty-five fifty, or eight million five, five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So, that leaves us a balance of four fifty, because we took them out of here. And then that one point two is not, is no longer out of that nine million, it's going to come out of the potential money that we get from HB four thirty.
It's essentially matching ongoing money with ongoing programming.
So, that way the.
Everyone else gets it. I, I'm sorry, I'm slow on this, but, okay, so keep, keep, keep talking.
I'm with him.
I'm with him, too.
And I gotta be.
And Alberto, as long as you're clear.
Yeah, I, I, so, so.
That's the guy that needs to understand.
And, and before I start, it sounds like these are minimal changes. So, from the perspective of being able to hit ten fifteen, all kidding aside, from the perspective of just, right, moving the process along, we, we can always come back and make an amendment after July first. I, I think just kind of reiterating, right, what was it, Director Scott? The budget train may be slow, may be fast, but it's always on time, and knowing that the, that July first, or after July first is an opportunity to come back and, and make any sort of amendments, however.
That's true, Mr. Delgadoio, and I'll just interject to, to say that if this is the extent of, you know, the amendment, and in concept, I think we're, we're on the same page. I think the reason it's, if we are, it's important to let our school communities know as soon as possible, so we can identify these folks who would occupy these positions.
Absolutely.
That's my only sort of urgency that I would feel.
Yeah, because if we wait till July one, and then there's going to be a scramble to hire in time for the school.
But I, I do still have a concern, because we still have to make up thirteen point three million dollars to get the general fund back in the next three years, and I haven't really heard a com, comprehensive plan on how to do that, especially if we're looking at deficits in the next couple of budget cycles.
So, hold that thought. I'll, I'll go back to clarifying what I think the current plan is, just to, as, as far as the second point being that to not use ESER, not use seven, not use ESER for the seven hundred and fifty K that we had set aside for middle school supports, but instead paid out of the general fund because that one point two million dollar para-stipend would be the idea, would be, would be leveraged out of the HB forty, thirty funding. Yeah, and, and, right, so that's right, the caveat is, right, seeing how HB forty, thirty comes along, getting the feedback from our partners and like working through that, so, but I, I wanted to say, I think I understood.
Can I ask a question, Director Hollins? Would you be comfortable, similar to the last thing we asked, directing staff to, to take that and come back with an amendment for the adopted budget? Some of this is also processed because Chief Delgadoio has to get this to TSCC tomorrow, so, you know, are we going to make him stay up all night, you know, rebalancing? Or are we comfortable coming back to, 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 to make that amendment at, in the adopted budget?
Well, I mean, how do you want to do that part? I mean, I, I still have a fundamental flaw as far as us not really focusing on the next couple of budget cycles. So, I'm, I mean, so that piece still is, is a, is a issue for me.
That's going to be, yeah, and the short answer is going to be an ongoing conversation that's going to start as soon as we get through this. I mean, we're having the conversation, we're talking about the trade-offs, but it is going to be a much more in-depth thoughtful conversation, and part of that involves the rationale for showing like the pie chart with how our services are broken out, because, right, we'll have to have those conversations regarding trade-offs. And subsequently, as I was sitting back there, right, we're talking about cuts, expenses, but then what are the opportunities to advocate for revenue? And, and, and having those conversations, and generally speaking, we make up about eight percent, it's kind of like a rule of thumb type of revenue out of the revenue conversation at the state level. So, just to meet kind of what we were at to cover our forty-nine million dollar proposed use of fund balance would require a little over a billion dollars that would need to be added to the state formula. So, we represent eight percent from a biennial perspective, right? So, like over two years, so, and that's just baseline, right? We want to do more, so, Director Bremet, we're to your point, like, what would we want to do more of, and, and what would the ideal state look like, right? Those are conversations to flesh out. But I bring that up, Director Hollins, because, yeah, it, it's going to be, it's going to need to be a very thoughtful and engaging conversation that's going to have to be drawn out over, drawn out not in a negative, negative way, but just like involved over the course of several, several months ahead.
And just four words, this three billion dollar kicker, right? I mean, just, you know, I mean, just honestly, when you talk about how broken our state fiscal situation is, right? Three billion dollar kicker.
We purpose it.
We, just a third of that going towards education would, would solve the problem you just outlined. Yeah.
And, and I think this is also a good time, as we talk about revenue in the future, we are looking at levy and, you know, renewal of that levy, and also then, you know, how might we increase the levy? Like, as, you know, we saw that last year, we were able to fund like twenty more teachers with the levy than we're going to be able to fund. So, this current year, we're able to fund about twenty more teachers than we're going to be able to fund for next program year, because again, our costs keep going up, and even though our, our tax revenue has done well, we're able to fund fewer teachers through the levy than we have. And so, that's another conversation as we look at revenue sources. The voters in Portland have been incredibly generous and supported, you know, capital campaigns, bonds, levies, and that, that conversation, we may have to go to the voters and say, this is the situation we're in, and we need more to support our teachers.
And continuing to advocate for SSA, because every biennium that comes back up.
Yeah. Yeah, right, to say, right, there's two sides to the equation, one is on the expense side, and what can we do on the revenue side?
The only cautionary note I would say about that, having, again, gone, been down to Salem every single legislative session since nineteen ninety-five, like, we need to have our parents with us and, and our teachers, and, you know, I think if we're not, it's, it's always a careful balance about investing in the classroom, and, you know, I, this has been a hard three years on, on parents, and I, I continue to be worried about the class size. I know it's, it's one thing, but it also, again, this is why, like, having something aspirational, like, let's go to Salem and get thirty-two students to a classroom, like, it's, it's not going to inspire people, and get people, you know, people like, I already pay a whole bunch of taxes, and then to have like a local option that's more, I, I, it's, it's a careful conversation for us to have, and what parents in our community value. So, I, I think we have to be cautious about what we do here to set us, ourselves up to be successful and have, having everybody together.
And I will just say that the PTA members with their signs is one of the most quietly effective things I've seen, and so, getting them to come to Salem with us with the signs is going to be really, really powerful. So, thank you, thank you for being here.
I'd like to.
And students, of course, Jackson.
I'd like to comment as well, before we, we got one minute. We got one. This is extremely tough. I'm actually waiting for it to get to twelve, because I.
It's actually ten sixteen.
We need, we need a verbal sprint, Director Green.
All right, go. So, in, in light of everything that we've got going on, and I, I love what we're talking about, I love where the conversation is going, I would also be remiss if we did not speak to violence interrupters within our schools. So, I, I love the fact that we're doing stuff with our CSAs and we're bringing on the, the four additional CSAs, but I'm talking about actual violence interruptors who are going to be the ones that are going to get in between the violence, who are going to be keeping a, a pulse on what's happening within the communities, what's happening at the schools. We got games that are going to be coming up, and the violence has not slowed down. In fact, it has, it has ramped up, and our, our games, our sporting events, all of those are actual targets. I'm, I'm looking at what are we going to be doing for the summer, when we know that we're going to be doing all this amazing summer stuff? Thank you, Danny, for all the, the different ones that she's giving contracts to and stuff, but how are we going to be keeping those kids safe while they're walking through and, through the community? Who's going to be interacting on their behalf? Who's going to be keeping the, the school community, our teachers, our principals, our, our admins aware of the violence that's happening within their schools? Are we all aware that Roosevelt just got tagged by, by the Latin, MS, what is it, like, eighteen or somebody, the, the Latino gang? Are we aware of that? That, and it was on the front door? That it was on the, that it was on the post? I'm sitting with children, I'm sitting with kids, and they're, they're telling me, Mr. Green, we, nobody talked about the fact that a person got shot at our school, and then we came to school the next day, the bell rang, and they said, just go to class. Nope, these are kids that are extremely traumatized just simply about coming to school. Then you get all the stuff that we're seeing happening around the world. I, I'm, I'm, I would be remiss if I did not bring up the fact that I love what we're doing with our CSAs, but they're not enough. They need, they need supports. Who's going to be our violence interrupter? How are we working with the larger agencies? Everybody talks about, we, we shouldn't have the SROs in schools. That was a political, a political decision, that we didn't have to do that, because now we don't have any relationship with them, and we are getting second-hand, third-hand, and fourth-hand information. And by the time they get to the school, I believe our schools have already been, the violence has already happened, and we're waiting too long. There's a lot that we need to be doing around violence interruption, and we need to be intentional, just as intentional as we are as talking about. We want to make sure that our teachers are getting the money, and that our, our custodians are getting money, and the nutrition services workers are getting money. We need to be talking about, kids can't learn if they're constantly looking around, wondering if the, if the next person coming in i- is going to be a threat. And so, what are we doing? Where does our budget line up with real violence interruption? And again, I, I love our CSAs, they do an amazing job. I know the ones at Roosevelt, I, I know, you know what I'm saying? We, we're doing great, and, and so it's not to knock on what we're doing, but the same way, you know what I'm saying? This is where Gary and I, there, there are very few times we disagree, and this ain't one of them, but it's to spend more money. And so, I'm trying to figure out how do we spend more money, but be intentional about how we're spending that money as far as violence interruption goes, because it's, it's real. And if, if today, an elementary school, we took a moment of silence, but let's pause and think about that for a moment, that an eighteen-year-old went to an elementary school, not a high school, but an elementary school, and committed a heinous act of violence, we have to do something. And so, I want to know, as we look at our budget, what's the violence interruption line item, and where do we find that money? And if that means we go to state, then let's go to state. I have no problem going to state and lobbying with folks, I'm loud as it is. And so, I can be loud at state, I can be, but we need to be doing it together, and we need to be intentional about what it is that we're, we're asking for. So, again, it's not to say the teachers don't get money, it's to say that we need, we need more, and we need to be intentional about violence interruption, and that, and that's where I know that even if we had to go into the conference, Gary and I would agree on, on that regard. That's the only reason, though, that, I think that's the only reason. Everything else got to go, everything else got to go. I'm done.
And I'm, I'm going to add on to that, because I, I, it's not necessarily of, you know, spending more money. I think we need to, as we look at all of our, the whole community piece, we have the city, we have Monmouth County, right? We have all these other agencies and other invested, or supposed to be invested municipalities that supposed to care for our kids. So, we should be talking with them, how do we work with them to, to help solve that problem? How do we work with them to have those resources and find those resources? You know, how do we share those resources so that way we can provide for that? So, this is a call out to the city, call out to Monmouth County, call out to Metro, whoever has dollars to help our kid, right?
You, you are.
And to, to make sure that we are providing that, because that is a city thing, and we need to make sure we're protecting our most vulnerable, which is our kids.
I appreciate these comments, they're connected, you're absolutely right. Danny, we've been having conversations with the city and the county on this point exactly. Maybe you can give a little bit of an update.
Sure, yeah, I would just reiterate, what Director Hollins just said is that the, in terms of us, we are, we're not a public safety entity, and so, us funding public safety doesn't necessarily make sense from a fiscal, in my, in my humble opinion, from a fiscal point of view. So, what we are trying to do with our summer programming, as you poured over the, the memo, you'll notice that there are several, deep into the, the narrative, a lot of, which might be missed, is that several of our providers are those violent interrupters that, you know, partner with the Office of Violence Prevention, that partner with the county, that have that sort of secondary and tertiary sort of like intervention pieces where we're, what, that they work with the county and the city to provide, and then they're working with us on prevention. So, we have organizations like POIC, like NEA, like Latino Network, and part of their summer funding is not only to provide the fun youth employment and the exploring green jobs and sort of field trips to colleges and universities, but there is FTE built into their budgets that is specific for working on coordination and safety and doing some of that violence, violence interruption. I'm happy to come back to you and let you know, the sort of, the FTE that we're supporting to, to do that work. We're also working closely, and I'm meeting with the county and the city this week to talk about sort of like, now as we go into the summer and we think about the city's resources, not just in terms of the Police Bureau and the Office of Violence Prevention, but also parks and the county and the CHI program and their juvenile department, how can we really sort of make sure that our prevention dollars get leveraged with all of those intervention dollars that are out there in a coordinated way that's working with specific eyes on our schools and the surrounding parks and, and communities? So, I, I would say that the, where our budget mainly talks about that has been, you know, in this, this board and this administration's commitment to working with our culturally specific partners, I'll cite the research all the time, the only proven way that violence, that gun violence in particular is reduced and where communities are resilient is if there is a strong public part, public-pilot partnership with nonprofits, or cities that have a strong network of nonprofits do much better in terms of, of violence reduction. And we've, we've got those partnerships, and we've invested in those over, over the years. And then we've, we've got to get out of the what's right in front of us and work on prevention.
Thanks, Danny. I'm going to ask if the board's ready to call this question, I think.
I have a few things.
I have a few things I haven't had an opportunity to say. So, the middle school piece, we're gonna, the superintendent's gonna get back to us with a proposal. Um, one of the things that I've been talking with staff about this week has to do with our, um, nutrition services and our custodial staff, and do we have the budget to, um, change the game there in terms of their wages? And it's a tricky que, it's a tricky, uh, challenge for us right now, because we're in ongoing labor negotiations at this moment with them, and we're in our budget process as well, but I just want to share with my colleagues that I have been sufficiently convinced that this budget has enough, um, resources earmarked for us to follow through in that process and do right by those two employee groups. This is something that I don't want to leave unsaid, because it's really important to me. Um, and if I hadn't been convinced of that, I would have sought some kind of, uh, um, some kind of, uh, redress in the budget process. So we'll all have a chance to visit that together when we're in, um, you know, executive session, talking about labor negotiations. I want to say thank you, especially for the addition of the school support instructors, I feel heard. I think that's a really important piece for our schools that have a hard time, uh, attracting substitutes, and it's just heartbreaking that we have so many unfilled sub positions, uh, this year, especially in our highest need schools. So I, I saw that additional allocation, and I appreciate it, and I think it's really, really, um, meaningful to those school communities. Because, uh, those people, they know our kids, and, and they're, they're ready to hit the ground running every day when they're put, pressed into service. I appreciate the additions to special education, I wanted to share a question I had and ask the superintendent if he might take another look at this. So, um, with our declining enrollment, we have a greater number of schools that only have, um, one administrator, so they don't have an assistant principal, um, because that's based on an enrollment threshold, and it's a very, it's a very difficult situation. It's not an ideal situation, no matter what your enrollment is, um, because there's so many, so many different tasks that both the administrators need to handle. But we have a particular pain point in our schools that have our SES classrooms, our social emotional skills classrooms, our high need, um, behavioral classrooms. And so, uh, there are, I think, nine of our schools that have SES classrooms that have a single-site administrator. And I was just, for example, at Hayhurst, um, this, last week, which is in that situation, and, um, it's untenable, basically. And this is another situation, like what we were talking about with the restorative justice coordinators. Some schools have been able to shift around resources when they're not budgeted for an, um, uh, assistant principal to, to find administrative support, particularly in service to those, uh, behavior classrooms, but it's, it, it doesn't work very well. And, um, it, it, it can lead to a kind of, um, disruption and chaos and a lack of stable support that really bleeds out into the rest of the school community. So I would like to ask you to take another look at our, at our schools with behavior classrooms that have just one administrator and see if there's some opportunity for redress there, um, or some kind of trade off we can make, because it's, it's really, really a hard situation. And the, just the last thing I wanted to say is the addition of school psychologists is fantastic. Some of them, um, are funded with one-time dollars, but more and more we've invested from our, um, our own ongoing special revenue fund, which is the, um, student investment account, which is awesome, because we can keep them, and that's great. One thing, um, that is of interest to me is, uh, you know, in response to a question about school psychologists in this budget process, we said there, there, these are all funded under, undersped, which is great, and so many, so much of their time is often involved with I E Ps, but our school psychologists do so much more than just support our special education, um, students. And I think that that's often undervalued, um, how they're able to be used as resources for the general student population. And, uh, so, you know, I, I, I guess I would like to understand better, uh, do we have enough support from us? Do we have enough school psychologists to support the needs, particularly in high schools, of all of our students? Or is, uh, are, are they pretty much being deployed, um, just working on I E Ps and in service to special education? And if that's the case, then, you know, thankful for all that we have now, but we need more, because our overall student population really needs to have access to those, uh, resources too. That's all I got.
Thank you. Student Representative Weinberg?
Yeah, I had a quick comment just about the counselor FTE ratio, um, we've kept it the same for the past two years. Um, and just, I mean, we've gone through a pandemic, obviously, and the social emotional need of students has increased exponentially. We're so close to the recommended FTE to, uh, student allocation, the high school three hundred to one, two hundred and fifty to one is the recommendation from the American Association of School Counselors, or some acronym similar. So we're, you get the, you get the sense, but we're so close in high schools, but in elementary schools, we're at four hundred to one, um, which is an extremely high number to serve, um, for elementary. Um, and then I just had a, I guess a follow-up question to what you said about investment in psych, um, school psychologists. Because, in the budget under psych services, we're seeing a decrease of five FTE, is that FTE coming out of special fund, not just general fund?
Can you cite what you're looking at, so they can follow up?
Yeah, general fund, um, function twenty-one forty, psychological services. The decrease in FTE is five for next year from this year.
Jay, you want to come up as well? If, if you have the answer off the top of your head.
Yes, I'm sorry, am I close enough? Oh, sorry, um, so some of our school psychologists are funded out of other sources, like some IDEA funds, some SIA dollars, and so that may be some of the difference, because I can tell you that we didn't make any changes to our building assigned schools psychologists for next year from this year, so.
You know, as, as long as you're up there, sorry. Sorry, too bad. I've had a question I was going to ask at the beginning of the evening. So, I want to make sure I have the math right. There was, um, one point eight million cut out of special ed initially, is that right?
A little less than that, one point seven.
Okay, so one point seven. We added back one point five. Is that correct?
And tonight, and tonight we were at one point eight, yes.
Oh, one point eight, so, so we added, um, a hundred thousand?
So we're, so we will be back at the FTE we would have been when we started this process.
It's just more expensive FTE, so we backfill them. And at the same time, we're predicting that there's nine hundred or so students in the pipeline to be evaluated?
There are somewhere in the neighborhood, eight, eight to nine hundred students that are currently in the process, so there, the sit teams are engaging with them, some of them are being evaluated and determined whether or not they may have disabilities.
So, um, I'm just making sure I'm doing the math. So, um, do we have students who graduated out of the system that the, those are replacing? Or is this like a, um, the, the, a bubble in the, the, the pipeline, and we're actually, even though we added it back, we're just have the same, we have the same number of special education staff with potentially nine hun, eight hundred, nine hundred more students who need services?
So we currently are seeing a larger number of students in process that would be typical. Um, and at that, it is, it is also typical for us to lose a number of students through leaving, graduating, moving, transfers over the summer, start at a lower number in the fall, and then, and then grow again throughout the year, that, that's pretty typical. And that growth usually starts in and around January, February, because school teams have engaged in intervention work and, and, and determine if students are responding, um, and then they start consideration of special education right around that time. And that's about the time we started seeing this, um, and, um, because, uh, students are, um, we're seeing students with more need now, um, there's more students in the process. That also does not mean that that many students will be ter, be determined eligible, because as we've all heard, many of our students are experiencing learning issues as a result of what we've all just come out of. Um, and that does not mean they all need special education services, so. Um, but I'm not going to tell you that our teams are not dealing with a lot right now, they are.
Okay, thank you for those. Um, what I have, what I'm proposing, no, I'm not proposing, um, I'm going to move us to a vote. Um, I think we have direction for the superintendent and his team to look at amendments around, potential amendments around, um, middle school staffing at TSI, CSI entitled schools, restorative justing, ju, restorative justice at every, at middle schools. And then, I'm going to call Director Hollins' amendment, which everyone else gets, and I'm sure I will, I will catch up. Um, and that's where we are, and then I think there were some other questions and conversation, and I think staff's been taking notes, so I, I hope that what was put on the table, we can, again, get those answers back. With that, is there any further board discussion before we move to approval of the budget? And we've already done public comment, so with that, um, Resolution six five one two, Budget Committee approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget and the imposition of property taxes, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes, yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
I'm a no.
No, and are there any abstentions?
Yes.
An abstention? So Resolution six five one two is approved by a vote of four to one with one abstention, and Student Representative Weinberg unofficially voting?
Uh, no.
Voting no, okay, thank you.
I'm going to have a statement for the record, that I'm going to submit for the record, too.
Okay. I will now recess.
I will also be submitting a statement for the record as well.
Thank you, Director Lowry. I will now recess the board as the Budget Committee, and we are reconvened into our regular meeting. And at this point, I know, we're just finishing budget, at this point, are there, is there any other, uh, there's nothing was pulled through consent agenda? Is there any other business at this time before we adjourn?
Just a quick comment that I, I voted no, not because I didn't support this budget, but just because I wanted more time to look and ask questions. I've been in I B testing for the past three weeks, and I've just started digging in, so it's not that I don't support it, I just can't support it until I've looked through everything yet.
Thank you.
And he has more sticky notes in his budget than anyone up here.
With that, uh, this meeting is adjourned, the next regular meeting of the board will be held on June fourteenth. And thank you, everyone, for coming and staying through this, I really appreciated the conversation and the testimony, so.